Okay.
Oh, yeah, it is time.
All right.
Excuse me.
All right. We will call, call, call the order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, so we've had our opening ceremony. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Any conflicts of interest or do I have the agenda approved as presented? Then okay, I'm ready to Madam Monitor if you'd read the minutes for us.
I got two. The first one is January twelfth. Board of Supervisors met at, which was a Friday, eight AM with Gina Hayden Chair Presiding, members present Dozark, Hayden, Rossberg, Schultz, and Mulbauer. A Mulbauer attended, no, sorry, Schultz and a Mulbauer attended by Zoom. Sorry about that. Motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Rossberg to appoint Seth Wise as Interim Zoning Administrator with compensation current rate. Motion passed unanimously. The board met with department heads for budget work sessions on motion duly seconded. The board adjourned at eleven thirty-four AM. I'll just go on and you can approve them at the same time. January sixteen, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Jean Hayden Chair Presiding, members present Schultz, Dozark, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved quick record fees for December twenty twenty-three. The board approved the Sheriff's Office Quarterly Report for October twenty-three through December of twenty-three. The board approved the Recorder's Quarterly Report for October twenty-three through December twenty-three. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rossberg to approve tax abatement for fourteen thirty, three hundred and sixtieth Street in Vale, Christie Ricker's, a new home. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Schultz to approve tax abatement for the twenty-seven hundred block of K Avenue in Dennison for Casey Buck, new home. Motion passed unanimously. A discussion was made by the board to set time and date for a public hearing on land rent auction for Crawford County Farm. No action was taken at this time. A discussion was made by the board about the county's health insurance medical plan savings with Joel Langle and Jeff Clayton from Holmes Murphy spoke briefly to the board about some plans their company can offer. At eleven forty-five, a motion was made to go into recess. The board reconvened for a budget work session with department heads at one PM. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at four forty-one. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
All right, any corrections or additions to the minutes? All right, they've proved as good then. All right, so the next item then is going to be the supervisors' reports. Who had a big week that wants to start?
I had a couple meetings.
All right, that'll be he starts.
Last Tuesday night, we had our land solid waste commission, solid waste agency commission, AKA landfill. Biggest item was the agenda. On the agenda was the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I think I passed the proposed budget around. The biggest mover in that was the purchase of a new J C B loaders and load the garbage. And recyclable. Looks like you got a bit of a twenty twenty-four and a twenty twenty-three. Yeah. Those two beds. Yep, one of them was smaller and they haven't actually demoed it out there. I think they could use it for six hours worth of usage on it, so I'm sure it's gone and it's in base. I was concerned about the size, Travis as well, that being that's smaller, the lift, the reach is not as long. So they figured they'd have some trouble filling both sides of the truck with that. So I said, well, I've never been pleased in my own personal life if I had something bigger and I got something smaller because it was cheaper, you know, a tractor, whatever.
Shop, anything.
Yeah, I says, you just always, you'll be disappointed with it all the time, I think. So they were gonna work on getting the more expensive. But I, I was pleasantly surprised. I thought they'd be a lot more expensive than they were. They didn't, I think they went up about fifty thousand in five years, decided maybe that was too bad. This would be motor, they just to find that curve. But through that process, go ahead and.
I'd say my experience with hauling rock and stuff with the hoppers, that bigger one will probably save you from damaging a trailer trying to reach over one, you know, bumping into the sides. That to me is makes that not more expensive, but more manageable piece of equipment.
Yep, that's a good point. But through that, there was a good discussion in regards to moving forward. How are we going to be more efficient out there? They're running off of what, two full time, three full timers and one part timer out there? And it's almost to the point where they need another part timer for one full timer and get rid of the part timers. So we're actually looking into Guthrie County and started hauling their own garbage. They got rid of the contract hauling. That's about two hundred and some thousand dollars a year. So we're looking, talking with them and we don't know if it'll work, but and I don't wanna just exploring that option of maybe start hauling our own garbage. I mean, the first year will be an expensive year to get by trailers and truck.
Would you use like a live floor?
Yeah, they gotta have a little bottom floor.
Bell bottom.
Yep.
There's a little maintenance, there's a little more maintenance to them than here, but.
You know, hauling our own garbage.
If they maintenance them, you don't.
Right now, Earl Bachers, which have been doing a great job. They're almost like the fourth man now. They, they take care of us good, you know, without the benefits, you know? So we're not gonna rush into this lightly. It's just if we can find us savings, you know? I use the adage of these big farmers who always figure out a way that they can do it cheaper by doing it themselves.
Does Guthrie go up to?
They go to Carol.
Carol Duke, so you get kind of an average about the same mile.
Yep.
Similar anyway, somewhat, yep.
Is that similar to just cutting out the middleman? Maybe is that how you?
A lot of it is, but when you cut the middleman, you also gotta assume all the expenses that he used to.
And you got truck and trailer. With them live trailers, there's more maintenance than just a.
Repairs, yeah, 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 insurance.
So we're looking into that. I don't know if it's gonna, but we're just trying to figure out ways to be more efficient.
How many loads have you taken?
Uh, Travis, average two a day.
Two a day, so then you can almost justify it then.
Yeah.
See, that's the thing is if you, if you only have one load every other day or one load a day, then you start to, you know, are you really making best use of that person unless they're doing other things out there too?
Yep.
But two a day, that's, you ate up a good, probably good four hours in a day for sure.
I think he said three hours round trip.
Yeah.
The time to get unloaded and everything, so, so you got six hours a day on an average.
Making whatever single day.
Yep.
Now.
Al, I figured two and a half percent salary increase.
Probably right, so. I thought it was under three. Well. But.
Little money for walkers on that budget.
I think it was a hundred and ninety thousand for it's, there's two, there's one that's in the recyclables expenditure, one that's in the garbage.
Twenty thousand recycling.
I think it's a hundred and ninety thousand or something like that in.
So there's a load of regular trash and a load of recyclables already?
The recyclables have maybe one a week or something like that, but that's where the average of two a day probably comes into play.
Earl Bachers tractor ninety-four ninety. Some tractor out there.
And their contract is up. It's fiscal due, so I've been feeling a bit of a deal with that.
Well, I appreciate exploring it.
Well, there's always so many ways you can, out there to say cut cost, you know?
Anything with the leach field.
Leach field, you know, just everything according to D N R is, we're, we're in good shape. You know, when it don't rain, we don't get any leach water, so, which is good because that's expensive to get rid of.
Yep.
And since that's probably been six years ago, we put the fountains in there, there in the summer. The area ain't that and let it evaporate faster. We haven't had as much leach water to haul, so.
Is this in the old part where they?
East of it.
Yeah, and both of the old cells, they're all drained down, all the water, whatever comes in the tile line, then it goes in the leach collection.
It's a regular tractor.
On a hard tractor.
Could be.
And then has to be hauled away or disposed. How do we do that? Right now, the last time we hauled it, we hauled it from there down to our van haulings and dumped it into.
Al, on, on Earl, Dave and I both got this, it says Earl Bachers tractor for nine thousand a year.
Okay, what? I think they always leave one out there. There's always one tractor there because Travis or whoever will shag the trailers in and out.
There you go. Funny, my first frame of reference, a tractor with like a grapple loading a trailer that they might be using for actually, and his first thought from trucking is.
Shagging.
Yep. So they dedicate two, two trailers to us and then there's always a tractor out there. Travis will shag the trailers out, put the new one in, call them, and they'll drop what they're doing to come and get that and take it away.
Really?
Well, that's a pretty good working arrangement.
It is, so I, I mean, I don't wanna, it would have to be a considerable savings on the county's behalf to change it because it's working pretty dang slick right now.
I think the only downfall on that and what I know about trucking is never know when you're gonna have a repair and they can be pretty pricey and what.
Yeah, like Paul's showing that it's cost effective. I mean, you can start hauling, we bought enough trucks and trailers to start hauling a lot of our own rock.
You know, even a used tractor out of Paul's fleet would probably, well, you guys are running it every day. I think a new tractor would probably be a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, obviously Travis and they weren't thinking about, and they were thinking a good used one.
Yeah, of course.
So.
And you could.
I reached out to Guthrie County and just, they close at three thirty over there, which, yeah. I reached out to them, Chuck might have already got it, but a lot of trash to be talked about out there, so.
Lot of trash.
A lot of trash talked.
Well, they might close at three thirty and still have an hour's worth of work to do that.
Yep.
We're gonna see that.
Yeah.
Uh, town H P's, they were set, so the cities and the county, that's about the highlights of that. Have guests that are meeting Friday in Cherokee. Same, same up there, just book to the max, average of nineteen per day with fifteen beds, so.
How are they on staff in a day?
Uh, they just hired three new males and two females, so they gotta kinda keep it balanced on the floor. I don't think it can be all males, it's gotta be a mix of the two, so. And one, one of, they did three males because one was leaving for the army next week, so, this week, so. Other than that, the staffing's, they're in a good spot. Uh, they noted that the transports didn't slow down at all during the blizzard. They actually got ramped up because I think the sheriff's departments or whatever, they have to do some transporting. We're like, can you come get them? They said they worked through most of them, but I think it was Saturday, they said, we're not leaving.
Yeah. So in a case like that, what would they do with the child that needs to go someplace and nobody can take them? Are they housed in, are in jail?
That's a good question. They're probably either housed at a hospital or in a, or probably released, I don't know. They can't, they can't stay in jail.
Yeah, mom doesn't want them at home and can't get them where they have to go for help and.
I remember Dad telling me, as he was on that board back in the day, they had a kid who was harmful to himself and others. They put him in a room, it was a big, heavy steel door, flush the wall. And this kid got his fingernails behind that door. It worked that door to where he bent this heavy steel door out from the door jam itself. And then all the padding around it took every single stitch of it out.
Yeah, they're pretty creative.
That's some rage.
They're pretty creative.
And they just, they were all just like, wow, that, that they just even bend that door to get your fingers behind that, just.
I think last, over the holidays or somewhere, they just took two days, they were way low on, because generally they're empty during Christmas because most J C Os send their kids home to be with their families. So they took two or three days just to fix stuff and repaint. And one of the rooms are concrete walls, chiseled through the wall trying to escape.
Oh.
Or, but the irony was he just chiseled his way into another room instead of going outside. Like under the window, he chiseled his way into another room.
Not thinking about where we're gonna end up, I just wanna.
You know what, I just, it's weird. Now the, the state, well, they, in the last month, we talked about how they were gonna release them extra rooms, a part of them. Yeah, well, they did, but yet now they came with, they can't fill them because you don't meet these criteria or whatever. So it's just the, the sham is just continuing to be kicked out or whatever, so.
That's so damn frustrating.
Yep. Then the last thing I got was the county farm. I know we talked last week about the rent. Lisa Gallagher is working on getting a proposal together for a C R P contract. She was supposed to get back to me and she hasn't yet, so.
Lisa Gallagher out in the local.
At the USDA office, yeah.
So you wanna sit tight till you're back there?
I think so, yeah. That's, that's the direction I would advise. We just gotta sit tight. It'd be hard to explain, we put it up to be rented and then we don't rent it.
Agreed.
Somebody will rent regardless of when we decide to rent it.
Right.
And it won't take that, wouldn't it go take her long to get that together?
No, she knew it at it, but she's, from what I've gathered, doing a great job out there, learning and. Uh, I think I could just, for what she used to do here, I would agree with that, so. So that's about all I have.
Yeah.
All right, do I just go down low?
Yeah.
Sure, I apologize because I actually got some information that I was gonna bring, so I'll bring it next, next week for my Wisconsin community actions meeting that I had last, last Tuesday night. And was preoccupied with some other thoughts this morning, so I forgot about that. Uh, did have the ISAC meeting that went to last, Wednesday, Thursday. And so I attended that, left at noon on Thursday just because the weather was getting bad. And I mean, it was, I guess from my perspective, it was different than what I had suspected going into type of the meeting that it was. It wasn't really supervisor focused. It was more focused on maybe team building or individual building. And being in corporate America for thirty-five years, like I have been with large companies, I mean, I've worked for the largest family-owned corporation, with Cargill. When I started at the time, worked for Rabo Bank, which is the largest ag bank in the world. Each have over sixty-some thousand employees. Um, we get that type of training consistently. So I mean, it wasn't anything new to me, maybe from, uh, you know, people that I guess don't have that um, history of working with those type of companies that it was something that was new to them or, you know? But it just wasn't, but I was hoping, I guess, I thought maybe it'd be more like on the, they had a person that spoke on Thursday morning and it was gonna be, I thought it was about the inter-office workings of the actual courthouse, like between the supervisors, the auditor, the treasurer, and it was just more, you know, inter-office generally speaking. And so I guess, I'm sure it's hard to find somebody that's focused on the inner workings of a courthouse. But, uh, you know, I, so I guess I was a little disappointed.
Okay, yeah.
In what, and I don't know if they do that every year, if that's just the type of the, you know, the ISAC university.
They switch every other year, so like, next year will be new county officer school in January, which will be more geared towards the inner workings of the elected offices because you are your new, your new, new elected people kind of orientation. And so then the off year, they do basically a team building leadership, ISAC university, it's a little bit di- different. I did hear, there were some people like in your shoes that have been through those type of leadership trainings, said just what you said. But then I, I did hear a lot of good feedback from offices that are trying to manage somebody or trying to manage an office and they're having difficulties with personalities and they really took a lot away from it, but hadn't been through something like that.
And I could see where in, in that instance, where if you were an auditor or treasurer and you're running a staff, where there were some helpful hints there.
Right.
Um, but I guess for our, as the Board of Supervisors, we don't really have a staff. So, you know, it was just, like I said, it was just different than what I thought.
And then you're combining everybody together too, so you're getting all the, those offices and the supervisors and.
I mean, Sherry was there, Cheryl was there.
Kim was there.
Yeah, Kim Fenner was there.
Now, did they, do you think they felt like they gathered or?
I think it was, they probably have, I mean, since they all run a staff, I could see where there were some things that were brought up that would be helpful, trying to get everybody to work as a team, work together.
We used to do that, I think, like regular.
The last gal was really interesting, I know you took off and you went to that. She was at quadrilla, what do they call it? Quadrilla amputee.
Oh.
Oh. And you didn't, I didn't know it at first, so we're sitting, I was sitting by Mary Anderson and she come walking up on stage and this was a gal from, I don't mean to jump in on you, but she had kidney stones when she was forty, she's sixteen years ago, and led to a bad infection. When she got through, like, they only gave her ten percent chance to live. She was a principal. They cut her arms off here and here, they cut her legs off here and here, or even below the knee. And she had prosthetics for all four. And they kind of kept telling her, like, you're not gonna do what you used to do, you're not gonna make it back and be a principal. And she kind of kept defying the odds and it was a really interesting story, neatly, I mean, that we kept.
Then her message was more about.
Perseverance. Not amazing. Just, you know, and then when you, you, actually told you that, you know, oh yeah, she, you know, you could see her prosthetics.
Did anything else, so.
All right. Brett, you're next.
Uh, I'll continue on with ISAC U. I did have a Board of Directors meeting that morning. Uh, I talked to Beth Manley for HIPAA. She said she is, she does work directly with Gary Jones and some counties do a hybrid or are looking at doing a hybrid type HIPAA deal. Um, she would be more than willing to zoom with us or come out here if that's something we wanted to pursue. It's just a matter of getting ahold of her, emailing her. Um, unless you wanna stay where we're at, but she was happy either way, just to even have a conversation.
Who we have come to that now, remind me?
Gary Jones. That was in our budget of twelve thousand dollars a year, is what it would be, Gary.
What she says she does, what?
Well, then typically they're two to three thousand a year, but it kind of depends on.
I wonder what that hybrid is.
I don't, and that's something we could talk about.
Right.
And she said, well, I.
And where we're at in Gary's contract too.
Exactly, and she said, as well, she said, we wanna be conscious that, because we work with Gary ourselves, that we're not stepping on each other's toes of.
Right. Right, so we might be in a good place to do a transition, make that transition because he's gotten us our policies, you know, well-written and as long as we're able to maintain anything new that comes down the pike and, you know, be able to keep that updated, so.
So I mean, it could be something worthwhile to.
It's training too, right, so, yeah.
Need to check on the contract and kind of keep an eye on that to see if it's time to change possibly?
So I don't know if you guys wanna address that sooner than later or put that on agenda?
Maybe put it on the agenda because we're always about saving a little bit of money wherever we can, so.
And then it's just, she didn't kind of mean it no more.
Let's, let's pursue that a little bit more since we're doing everything we can to save a little bit of money here and there.
Um, also in that meeting, the Board of Director meeting, I mean, I went over some legislative stuff, legislative update. What I took away when I had to meet with our mental health regions, I guess there is a map they showed us that is gonna change. There will be seven mental health regions. Polk County will no longer be standalone, they will have to be in a region.
Let the lines just go straight instead of working around that?
They said there may be some maneuvering of counties here or there, the regions might not exactly be what they have drawn out. What was interesting and what was very concerning to the Board of Directors and just everyone that was brought up, there would be an R F P that is not out yet. It sounds like there would be an R F P for each region to provide mental health services. Anybody can apply. So you could potentially have your existing mental health region office apply. You could potentially have public health or the Great Plains or a hospital, whoever. You could potentially have private industry apply. So my own personal opinion and what was kind of discussed amongst everybody there was the fear is that it could potentially be a step in privatization in mental health for Iowa, which would be a lot like our M C Os, so you could have a for-profit private company come in, bid this R F P, get it, and then water down the services that are core services or put them towards your more urban areas. And will still leave us all through the cracks here.
Absolutely, we talked about that a little bit at public health yesterday.
Whether that happens or not, it's just interesting how they are, there will be a shift in mental health.
Well, when they get it to the point where they're talking about it and it's, it's happening, they're just dropping it on us like confetti that it's coming our way. And that's what they brought up at public health yesterday. Kim was at those same meetings and lying, she said that they were gonna break up Polk County and we aren't like, I'm not, but it's kind of, you know.
Timeline?
They didn't give us timeline.
Easier to feed your baby spoon versus a baby spoon.
I guess.
More soup ladle.
It's, it's that first.
To be continued. This might be closer to a scoop shovel. So, I mean.
I don't like that at all.
No.
I don't either.
But to me, it's. But to me, it's
our small counties are.
You're stripping the, the local control, home rule away from us, you're taking, you're voting right away, and now you're gonna bid it out to anybody?
And it'll come down to that private, potentially a private company coming in here and saying, this is what you're paying us.
Right, and.
And this is the service we're giving you, and you know your, you know that your biggest needs will probably be the biggest neglect.
It's, it's, uh, all it's all gonna, it's gonna.
I mean, it's, we shouldn't be so cynical, obviously, but it's hard not to be.
It's hard not. Well, when tradition shows us, proves to us that we need to be.
Wow.
But then on the mental health.
Never seen that coming.
Aspect as well. I had an interesting conversation with Chris Rowley, who was a treasurer walking north. Her, her husband is Senator Rowley. And we brought up that House File seven eighteen is not gonna be as bad as you think, and you're gonna have more funds available and it isn't the end of the world and I said, well, this year for us, I mean, we had eight point six percent growth. Of course, this year we're looking at a somewhat of a po- I mean, positive revenue, but I said, just what you said, Gene. We're gonna run into where valuations decrease, farmland values go down, that rolling five-year average commodity prices go down. And I don't change the dynamics of what our total assessed values in the county will be in. She kind of pushed back a little bit, she said, well, the reason the state legislature went down that path of House File seven eighteen is because we got rid of the mental health levy. And counties, some of them were bad apples. And they did not get rid of the mental health levy. And I said, wait a second, that was law, every single county in Iowa had to get rid of that, they took it off our books, we could not levy it, it's illegal to levy for mental health, the state's doing that. She said, oh no, there's counties doing it. I fact-checked with Bill Peterson, he said, no, 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 there is no county levying for mental health whatsoever, the state took that away.
Oh, except for Polk.
No, they had taken away too.
They did too? Oh, I thought they were different because of this.
I think they get extra funding from the Christmas tree bill.
Yep, yep.
How, long story short. And I was telling you this last night, here's a senator's wife has, who is a treasurer, did not understand, Bill said that what happened was they'd wiped the mental health levy from counties. There was a number of counties who said, alright, at thirty, forty cents per thousand, whatever, we have a capital improvement project, we have maintenance we want to buy, we have a secondary road shop we'd like to finish, whatever, so we're gonna leave, you know, kept the overall county levy the same. Which didn't lower, you know, the total overall because of mental health though. But, you know, the people didn't feel the difference, but it got other projects done. I guess my point is that I thought it was very concerning that there was this misconception that counties are illegally.
Doing things.
Levying for mental health. And that state legislatures did not talk to their local supervisors or auditor, and they instead started drafting bills that are affecting us to restrict us from doing something that we're not doing in the first place.
Well, it don't surprise me, that some of our legislators have said that not as many workers, they want to get rid of this form of government because it's ineffective, but this cost of tax, there's too much money anyway. We don't know what we're doing.
And then what she left it, just, oh, you, you supervisors from Crawford, you need to talk to your legislators.
Pretty sure we have.
Pretty sure we have, more than once. Uh, I'll piggyback on that for just a moment. Uh, now going to tie, I had my public health board meeting yesterday, and well, they kind of indicated that they're gonna be doing away with the local public health board also. That's kind of what Kim took away from some of that, but, you know, they currently have ninety-nine public health boards and and I didn't bring the paperwork, because I had a lot of paperwork to bring from last night, uh, but they're thinking it's probably gonna be like maybe teen regions that they'll all kind of be together and.
The region thing.
Yeah, yeah.
No county public health there?
No, and that, that was the takeaway of that, that they, they'll be coming where there's no local.
They're gonna cost us money now.
If that spare room over in that other building, I can move mine.
So that's what it'll be.
And regions aren't regions, it is an area that supports an urban center.
Right.
Right.
It's just a way to funny funnel the money.
So we'll have like one region in western Iowa supporting.
Public health.
Either pot or wood burning.
Ran by somebody other than.
Or vote, you know.
And we'll have to work with people that it's all based out of Sioux City or Council Bluffs and or people out here in Crawford County that need the help, we'll be like, well, we can't get the.
And we have no transportation.
Can you imagine going from ninety-nine, you know, Kim said there's some of the smaller, you know, counties.
Like Monona County already doesn't have one person in the public health, I think.
Yeah.
They do, I think that's.
A true region to me is exactly what region twelve is for us. Six counties that work together, we're all very similar. Funds are spread out very equally.
Very similar was the key word, that we have all the same kind of roach problems and population problems, diversity.
The county, all the counties are similar counts?
Real similar, you know, trying to, there's industry and what can we do to make our young people stay here and all the same.
Any other main priorities that ISAC had for legislative session or?
Um, just what we had already um, passed or objectives and priorities that they're gonna work on. Uh, it was brought up and we had discussed and didn't really, nothing was decided, didn't really have an avenue for this, but it was talked about that. With the summer school programs, it costs two million dollars for admin fees to get this USDA grant. And it's like twelve times, twelve to one back for food subsidies for students throughout like summertime of the school year. And the state legislature had decided, or some of the state, I don't know, but governor decided that they did not want to pay that two million dollars. Which leaves a lot of money on the table for our students to get food throughout the year. And it was brought up, if ISAC could do anything to help, we wouldn't have the capability of administering something like that. There was some counties that were asking if they could just pay for their county's portion of the admin fee to receive their portion of that USDA food supplement program. To get every county together to do that would be quite a feat. Um, but there are other options being looked at. Some private industries, private individuals have, I think, what was said is maybe inquired about stepping up to the table to help cover that admin cost. But again, if the state says no, and legally, I don't know what a county can step in.
How do you divide a two-million-dollar admin fee?
Across all counties.
In a little county.
It'd have to be per population.
Yeah.
In half, we have to sell.
But that'd still be pretty pricey, wouldn't it?
Well, some two million dollars.
So the federal government charging the state government two million dollars to administer a plan the federal government put out?
So they get the same crap that they hand down to us?
Simplify that for us.
Band-aids.
Well, I mean, locally, yeah. We had an admin fee.
Who can we start?
Personally, for, I had a livestock identity program for, you know, I had to pay an admin fee.
Yeah, but that's just to work in. What I'd say, working at the government is free taxing entities, a school, state, and a federal government, charging each other for one program. A lot of shoveling money around, I think the money gets lost and it's put in somebody else's pocket.
It was interesting, Kevin Green.
Need to get the churches and, you know, ladies, make supper dinner for everybody during the summer.
Kevin Green, who's on, um, the, on board of, our board of directors as the public health representative, said forty-one percent of all students across Iowa qualify.
Forty-one percent?
In Crawford County, it's, it's way higher, we're pushing sixty-five.
I mean, they're just paying that's an average across the state, yeah, so.
Charrope was like sixty-three percent, I think Dennison was even higher than, I think Dennison was over sixty-five percent.
Probably.
Yeah, I mean, just demographics of our county.
So I guess there, there is talk about maybe how to not lose out on these funds, but I just don't, I guess it's stay tuned.
It's well-received during the summer, there's a lot of kids that go up there and get a meal.
You'd have to have a hundred percent participation, wouldn't you?
It really, it really needs to come from the state.
Yeah.
You know, the state, the governor, the legislature, they, they, it's something, I don't think they have to do, because that's why they turned it down, but it'd have to come from them to agree to pay that admin fee and get that grant. But it kind of goes back to, you always say it's the Warren Buffett deal, twelve to one return.
Yep.
It does make sense, but.
So, not to be a downer, but that's something that was discussed.
I mean, that's just, that don't even feed just the students, that feeds anybody. The parents can come up and get a meal.
Is it?
Yeah.
You turn it off.
And anywhere during the summer, yeah, there's parents and stuff, they'll take advantage of that.
So I mean, those programs are separate.
Well, they might be funded separate, but I guess I don't, I know just.
The program you're talking about affects the school, the schools feeding lunch during the summertime for breakfast.
Our cooks go up and prepare it.
So we do a bag?
Right, they, they still do that. That program that he's talking about, it does not affect that program that you're.
Really?
No, it's separate.
Really?
It's the way I understood it.
So is that a bank program where you can drive through at the high school and they send you a fatwa?
Yeah, and that, that, what he's talking about, it does not affect that.
It's, they said the summertime.
This would be in addition to that, summer meal program.
Summer meal program, it will be sent.
I mean, because the way I understood it was that it was a forty-dollar card that they got that they could use at any place. I mean, they could go to Casey's and get two bottles of pop and potato chips and just swipe the card. And when your forty bucks is gone for the month, you're done.
That wasn't discussed.
Per child?
Per child.
A better what your income for?
No, it was income-based.
Income-based, okay.
I think it favors something like that.
Oh, I'm not, yeah, I, I, that's the way I understood it.
See, and that was not what was discussed, they said it was more of a summertime school.
Okay. Where they can go to the.
There's some confusion there.
That's how I understood.
I'm not.
Multiple programs?
Now, that's just, I mean, that, to me, what this, the lunch program looks after them less fortunate kids. And if we have them, they all see them, and there's probably a that forty-one percent is probably pretty easy to find here, like Kyle said, there's six, sixty-something. I think to look after their health, I mean, a healthy mind has got to be fed, not just.
We still have the Crawford County Hunger Fighters, that works throughout the summer, I mean, they don't do the backpack program in the summer, but they still give food to families, have their monthly.
But there's no income on that, anybody, you can just drive by and as many people as you have in the car, so many bags.
Keep an eye on it.
But it'll keep, and I think it'll be continually discussed. I would think that with a federal program, we know how many strings are usually attached and how you meticulous it is on, you have to do exactly this to receive those funds, that's just the issue.
Look at them, I don't know, you're talking about these people, but look at the EBT cards or whatever, you go in the grocery store and people use them, that's fine. That's what they're there for. But I witnessed it where they're trying to buy dog food and they said, well, you can't use that card for dog foods, they went back to the meat counter and got steaks. Feed that to my dog. Feed that to the dog.
Wow, yeah, that ain't right either.
Some, and then they go up and their brand-new Cadillac Escalade.
The sad thing, and.
The strings are hotter, that hat's tight enough.
Those instances really, really hurt the mother trying to work three jobs and doing it all on her own.
I was gonna say that's probably the exception more than the rule.
But you know, those, those few instances.
That's the ones that are in the.
Hurt the ones who really need it, you know.
There's a, there's a lot of good people that need that and use it correctly too. So I mean, I can't, that's why you can't really say you need to get rid of the the SNAP or whatever, you know, the farm bill is made up mostly of that. The biggest share of the farm bill, I think farmers all get it, but that's, that's the food program.
Yeah, that's the the lion's share of the farm bill is actually the SNAP.
Mm-hmm. Which is needed.
And it helps the farmers, it keeps food moving in the country, so.
None of it's perfect, you know, trying to identify the core of the family, how many people are in that household. It's difficult to prove.
Oh, people that don't.
But I think they, a lot of the error on the side, if you come to ask, or they're gonna probably give it to you, you know, that.
That's saleable. Yeah, wouldn't have made otherwise.
So, Ty, what do you have? We're running short on time, so we have to talk fast.
Well, I, I won't steal any of the thunder from CDC since they're sitting in the back of the room here. I just, I would like to say that in the last meeting, I was very impressed with a couple of things. First of all, I could actually hear this time. Nice job, guys, got it all in there. Anyway, uh, they were actually already working on things. You know, I, I, I am not gonna critique the old ones compared to the new ones, but I will say that there's a lot of forward working. Uh, they're already working on Barbecue Fest and full, full force so that it doesn't occupy so much time. You know, and there's things starting to happen, which is how I was taking it anyway, so I was very impressed with that. Already a long ways around, I know there's a couple of big organizers over there that are kind of detail-oriented, so that might be the help, but working on other things, I, I just was very impressed with some of the stuff that I see moving forward. And a lot of the, without even me sitting in the room, being the badger, you know, I mean, the outside of Dennison part of the county is always part of the conversation now, and I think that's, that, that's a very positive development, in my opinion. So I mean, I, otherwise I won't take any of their thunder that they're gonna bring, but I just wanted to add them comments before we got going. Um, I did, I, I did have a NACO meeting for the Ag Committee, and I'm gonna try to get over here so I can read some of that stuff, but I won't get too detailed since I have a short time, but the, uh, we're working on all the legislative priorities, uh, for the, uh, legislative session we got coming up here at the beginning of February up there in Washington, and I think that there's some pretty positive stuff in there. Review. Give me a couple minutes. The, uh, I wanted to read stuff so I don't get confused, one versus the other here. The EMS, the MA, they're, they're wanting to work, that's a big priority this, this session will be working on the EMS reimbursements to our ambulance services and such, they, they really want to push that on the federal level this time, so that's gonna be a big, big thing, um. You know, for basically to help our rural counties in particular, you know, on reimbursement funds and our volunteer services, so that's actually a big push this session. And that was actually number, number one listed, so that probably adds a little bit more to that. Substance good-for-all initiatives to attract financial resources needed locally produced nutrition foods and widely kind of where you just sat, so that's still on NACO's level of legislative priority, so I was glad to hear that. That might be something I bring to them about the administrative costs and stuff like that. So, uh, also, uh.
I'd bring Craig's point as well, I mean, I agree with getting, you know, the kids the, the nutrition that they need. But I don't like an open credit card either, I mean, it has to come with some guidelines, and I don't know if it does or not, but.
And I don't like the idea of going down to Casey's and my pop potato chip.
Well, I mean, I, I can just read, just briefly, Iowa Department of Education, Health and Human Services notified US Department of Agriculture that Iowa will not participate in a program that provides additional food assistance for children during the summer. The two live departments alongside Governor Reynolds released a statement that they plan on, quote, enhancing and expanding already existing childhood nutrition programs. Instead of participating in the summer electronic benefits transfer for children who's programmed in twenty twenty-four, the program also known as Summer EBT provides families or children who are eligible for free or reduced lunches at school with an EBT card allowing them to purchase forty dollars of food per child each month when school is not in session.
No restrictions?
No, no, no. Just as long as you're on free and reduced lunch at school, you get a card, one per kid.
One per kid.
Thanks for clarifying that. Forty bucks, what's that?
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, but that kind of stuff needs to be cleaned up with NACO, you know, if you truly need that card, one thing, but do it right.
Yeah, use it for positive nutrition.
Right.
Uh, the other, one of the other things is the alternative energy development and maintenance of working agriculture lands and increasing the comp uh, competition with one another, this is the issue. Uh, the county land use and natural resource management authorities are often under threat, okay? I think this is probably in your Texas's and some of the other counties or states. Uh, we're, we probably don't have as much big energy development, I think, you know, uh, some it might be something where they're, that, that, I don't know, that'll be part of this discretion, but they're an energy part of the energy system that's using farmland, so I mean, they're just wanting to make sure that, uh, everybody's voice is at the table. Everybody's voice is at the table, they'll push, but that is how it seems to me when they're talking about this. Because some farmland is being basically consumed and even in some sense destroyed. And won't ever really retain it or re, re reclaim its past value. Because of, you know, whether it's for cultivating, you know, it's, you gotta remember, it's not just Iowa when, when I'm looking at NACO stuff, so I mean. It's other bigger issues that we don't luckily have to deal with, or at least at this point, you know, drilling, you. If you drive around Oklahoma, you see, you see the rigs everywhere out there and, you know, scattered across their wall. If that was on our farm ground, which is. Out there in a lot of pasture ground and, you know, land that's about fit for grazing and that's it. But when, if you were giving up great crop production ground, food, food production ground for all these oil. Things and sit there, that, that could be a bit of a challenge, energy. And so maybe it also would include windmills or something to that effect. Uh, and I, I won't get into all of these. I mean, the, the uh. See, this one here was the Food Security Act who wanted to do some increased payments on drought resilient and, and water saving practices, which is obviously something I'm concerned with. I wanted to bring that up. So, it's, these are all things that are even, even on a national level being discussed. So, I mean, it's not unique to us. And it ain't something that, you know, it's, so it's, it's, it's national. So, I mean, those were the, the, the prime. Legislative priorities we were working on, other than the farm bill, out for like things we've already discussed. I did hear a couple of things that I, I, I think we need to keep our eyes open for. I don't know what, how much factors to it, but somebody brought up that out in Colorado, and I hate to be picking on Colorado lately, but it seems like I have had a few issues.
Low hanging fruit.
Low hanging fruit, exactly. Uh, there may be being a, a Wuhan type lab, lab built out there and I heard. I don't know, I, I haven't had time to research it, because I just got the mail this morning. About they've been vaccinating for Ebola, the, the healthcare workers out there in case of an outbreak or something.
Yeah.
So that bothered me because in animal agriculture, we have Plum Island, which is off the coast of America. Where we worked on vaccines and, and, you know, diseases. So, why would they put something in the heart of the country? You know, I, I, like I said, I don't know. So if you hear something, just keep your eyes peeled, that's all I'm saying. I mean, it's obviously some of a concern to see.
Chances are, we'll go home and hear about it and see, well, that's what Ty must have been talking about.
So in any event, other than that, I got CD, uh, Central Iowa's coming up on Friday and then. On Saturday, I'm going down for fire school again this year to help with vehicle rollover training, so.
We can certainly come back to you after Ben, so.
No, I, I got pretty much everything covered.
Just kind of keep the agenda on track a little bit.
Sorry, I took five minutes of your time. I don't know how much truth there is.
Chances are we'll know there's something more about that. Welcome.
Good morning.
Yeah, what do you got today?
Well, first and foremost, the thing on the agenda here was gonna be, uh. Hopefully approve a contract for the bridge I'm gonna be doing up on E sixteen there. However, I haven't seen it come through, so I might have to be at I M for next week. So, not sure what the delay is or on that, so. Well, yes, uh, we got some, got our bids in on that, which they came in about a hundred and twenty thousand under. What our estimate was, so we're. We're one sided about that, saving a little bit there, so, no, pleasant, pleasantly, uh, pleasantly surprised. Shouldn't say surprised, but uh, that on top of what we anticipate from Hunter Canyon's funding on that project, that. It'd be a good project, uh, get that bridge replaced up there.
Hundred and forty thousand Hunter Canyon towards this project?
I anticipated about a hundred and sixty thousand, I believe what, uh. Believe what we applied for up to, so.
Could be about a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings.
Yeah, it could be.
County property tax savings, anyway.
Off of what the, the estimate was, yes. So, yes, uh, we'll, we'll keep looking for that contract to come from the, come from the DOT and then, uh. Where, do you guys next week?
Expecting it yet today, is that what you're saying?
Well, I actually expected it last week, so I'm not sure what the delay is, uh, policy. Hoping to see it come through before he left on Friday, but hadn't yet, so.
All right, well, stay tuned.
Yeah, exactly. Outside of that, uh. Have the snow removal going on, uh, well, from a little bit of wind that we had on Sunday there, uh. We did end up sending a, a truck or two out to care of a couple of drifts on Sunday.
Or the work that I got stuck in one of them. Stephanie's closing your eyes.
No, I know, um, I, I know Erling Road had a, a couple of really bad ones going across to just, uh, there's some trees and just. You know, this is the right scenario, most of it blew right up and over the roads, but there's just a couple spots and we.
South Maybrook was a perfect storm of just swirling and building up and, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it could get me out.
Rest of the guys, they were out early on Monday, uh, to, to try and uh. Push it from, drifted from the other direction this time, blowing from the south, so.
Yeah, I should have taken a picture because it was quite comical, but.
Oh, nothing funny about getting snuck in a stoker, that's for sure.
Thank goodness for good neighbors. That's all I can say about that. Um, and I did keep a, a van from trying it. Cause if I couldn't make it with my juke, they're going, I bet I can't make this with my van. So then they went around the other way, so I saved some people from getting stuck in the rocks.
Way to put yourself out there. So, yeah, the trucks and the, the graders went out, uh, Monday, of course, uh. To open everything up on the back roads, along the gravels as well and, uh, and, uh. Keep after the pavement, so what was still blowing and, uh, this morning, I ended up having a little bit of a slick patches to contend with as well.
So school was two hours?
Surprising, but, yeah, yep, so we, we did go out early with the trucks a, a little bit and, uh, just treated the roads and, uh. We just treated everything, you know, hard to identify where the slick spots were, you know, I just treat everything, uh, the same. But, uh.
People that drive the roads every day know where they are.
Well, it surprised me this morning. I, it wasn't really on my radar to, to look for slick roads. It didn't look like it was doing much and I. Well, better go take a drive and I got through a couple of dumb curves on M sixteen there and, uh, I got, I thought I was going in.
Pretty pretty.
Yeah.
Enjoy the flowers.
But aside from that, uh, getting guys trained on the, the timekeeping and the things and, uh, gonna get everybody with their devices, getting going on that. And, uh, we do have, uh, some LIDAR training. I don't know if Paul's mentioned that, uh, the Hunger Canyons did set a date for doing some training with, uh. Oh, how to use the LIDAR, the, the, uh. It's, um. Kind of a survey that they've done already of basically the whole state of Iowa that, that it's just. Able to access, we're able to access and use rather than conducting our own survey. They have a lot of the survey points used for topography on our. Our projects already. We're gonna see how we might be able to access that. And get some training on that to, and to be able to use what's all available to us, I guess. Uh, that was mentioned out the Hunger Canyons meeting. They, they, they did end up setting a date and, uh, so they are gonna be doing that, but. Yeah, that's, uh, all the news I have on, on my front, I guess, but, uh, we're still gonna be. Pushing back some drifts, you know, widening things out on the roads and.
They got.
Yeah.
Okay, I, they did a bang up job, the secondary roads crews did, I.
They did.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of hammering drifts back need to be done yet, but I was hoping it'd help before that.
Amazing how much ice has melted off the roads itself.
Yeah, and yesterday, things started opening up and started seeing bare ground in the fields and the roads are starting to show and.
And you get some thirty degree temperatures.
Nice.
It would help.
I know the, the equipment, you know, we've got a couple graders that are showing a little bit of stress because of it all, but, uh, we're. Got some fuel in the oil and, yeah, transmission issues on another, but, uh, we're addressing them and, uh. Keeping them on the road, so, but yeah, that cold weather that we had, it's just hard on everything, so.
Yeah, it's hard on everything. So the, uh, your staff is. Doing well within due time, keeping sister nitrogen flowing smoothly, what do you think?
We just got the devices that they're gonna be using at the outline shops in, uh, in a day or two. Trying to get them set up and, uh, it, it's gonna be a, a learning deal for some.
Change is hard.
Yeah, nobody likes change, but, uh, it, it's kind of the way we need to go. But, um, but yeah, we're getting them set up. Uh, Amy's been very good at, uh, offering some training to the guys, uh, you know, how to, how to enter and stuff. Like I, I went to do my own, I was like, yeah, I got a question already for Amy, so. I, I imagine there's gonna be a lot of questions from the guys, but we're gonna kind of type up, uh, here's what you do here, you know, a, a little bit of a cheat sheet for them and, uh. And, and get everybody involved. And same with the fuel program, getting and, uh, getting everybody using our, our fleet minutes program, uh, to enter in their fuel. Just trying to get away from the paper, paper cards, paper timekeeping and, uh. A lot of run around by the foreman and having to gather up all that stuff.
Time, yeah, it's time. I think, uh, there were some snap boos in, in just, you know, I had public health meeting and they had some problems with. Some input, but everything's fixable and everybody's being patient, so just Amy will page you through it.
I see, I'm having, really, and, uh. Haven't had a whole lot of calls from folks out by, everybody, everybody understand here, I mean, uh, there's gonna be roads that. Get over them, you know, dead end, you know, dead end roads that, oh, we, we missed that one, yeah, and, and they'll, they'll call and we'll let us know and, uh. We'll go out after them, but, uh, so we're, we're still finding some that, uh, still need to be opened up, you know, that, uh, that may have, uh. Need to be addressed, so, but, uh.
It happens.
It does.
Lot of roads in O nine or ten that never got touched and they melted themselves.
Yep, and, uh, you know, some folks have got to take it upon themselves to get themselves open and, uh, you know, a guy might know why and.
Some perky, that sector is able to hope most all the roads they need to get to, they'll find a way through them. I seen a turtle punch through a dirt road the other day so they could get any of the cows. They went right down the middle of the road, just punched right through the dirt.
It's a challenge. It's, you know, uh, people that have the equipment kind of enjoy getting it out and seeing what it can do. I can testify to that.
Paid four hundred thousand for the tractor, that's what he was.
Just want to use it. And if you get it stuck, who are we gonna call?
Well, them guys usually have.
This week they might start.
Do we need to establish a, uh.
Yes, I apologize.
Detour then without, you wanna do that?
Well, I, I don't imagine why not, uh, we can still establish a detour. It is gonna happen, so.
Okay.
Yes, uh, for the road closure upon E sixteen detour route, um, been established.
So we'll need a motion and it's a resolution?
Ty is not the chair.
Golly, I didn't change that, uh, but yes. Yeah, I was gonna say I reduced my stress load this year, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash seven, establishing officially two ago. For the, uh, concrete box replacement project over the, on County Road E sixteen.
All right. Very good. Uh, any further discussion on that? If not, I'll do roll call. Kyle?
Hi.
Craig?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Ty?
Hi.
Chairball Ty, uh, we do have a detour route, so.
Imagine, and everything is already in the ground and ready. As far as anchor, in case they want to get started or what.
Yeah, who knows what that weather is gonna let us do, so. Alrighty.
Actually, last year we were so happy they started at twenty eighth of February on the.
Well, we give them a, a couple of months to hopefully forget them off. Yeah. I'll get this changed, uh, oh, do you want me to give that up to you guys?
Yeah, just bring it back when you get it.
There you go, I'm gonna take it over here. Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, we're gonna keep on with the agenda. So next on the agenda, Riley Gibson, you're on to, uh, give us an update on the Summit Carbon Solutions project, so come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good for formality, formality sake, and since it's been a little bit since I've been here, my name is Riley Gibson and. I work for Turnkey Logistics and represent Summit Carbon Solutions. Predominantly on the non-environmental permitting side, but, uh, uh, wanted to come in here. It's been since, I think, September tenth, since I've got a chance to come in here.
Been a while.
Yeah, um, and, uh, yeah, our apologies, there really hadn't been all that much to update with the I U B going on and.
Yep.
Uh, I think everything has been turned into the I U B for, for both sides. Uh, I think the, uh, the post. Briefs were due January nineteenth, so as far as the I U B's concerned, it's, we're hanging out, um. And I don't think they necessarily have a timeline on when a decision's gonna be made, but could be, you know, spring, um. Towards the end of winter, um, if, if there isn't end to this winter, uh. Which, uh, so we're, we're hanging out in, in Iowa, uh, waiting for that. I know there's still a lot of resources being dedicated to North Dakota and, and South Dakota. Um, North Dakota, uh, I think they're still kind of waiting on procedural hearings since we're, our permits being reconsidered. There, I think there's still some procedural things that, uh, they're gonna take care of first and, and get back in. I'm not too sure how that's gonna work when. They're reconsidering a permit, I don't think we necessarily have to go through the whole process. In South Dakota, we do, um. I know they're still working on, um, getting a permit resubmitted to South Dakota, um, so that could push us, you know, I think. A year out or so. I, I think Summit is aiming towards now, maybe starting construction in twenty twenty-five. I think there's a lot. Predicated on that. There's a lot of things, a lot of bridges we gotta cross before we can, we can accomplish that, um, especially.
Do you think, Riley, that you, um, wait until you gotta, you think you'd have to get approval from North Dakota, South Dakota and Iowa? All three before you would even proceed?
I believe so, yeah, sp- specifically North Dakota and South Dakota. Um, it, you know, we. We'd have to connect Iowa through there and we, it, it wouldn't make all that much sense to go ahead and put all the resources into construction. Not knowing if we are, at the end of the day, gonna get North Dakota and South Dakota and with all the work they still gotta do over there, so.
Does that change? Cause at one time I thought you were gonna start construction before.
Yeah, and I, I, I think there, it was a little vague, you know, when we got denied in South Dakota, it was kind of, we were all trying to figure out kind of. What's the path forward, what's the plan? Um, and, you know, there was a lot of heads and. Getting together and trying to figure out, you know, what's the best plan action from here. Um, it, it does seem like it, it. It's been decided, you know, Minnesota and Nebraska are kind of on their own timeline as well, but that we don't necessarily need Nebraska or Minnesota to begin construction. The main route, um, North Dakota, South Dakota and Iowa. Um, but if we can accomplish those, we can begin construction. Regardless of where we're at in Minnesota and Nebraska, um, cause I think Nebraska's on a different time. Frame as well. I'm not even sure when those hearings begin, but, um. So that, that's kind of the plan. I think, you know, Summit's message is, uh, they would kind of like to be, you know, we. Our goal is to be operational in twenty twenty-six. Of course, there's still a lot of bridges to cross before then, uh, so, you know, there's still. Thousands of permits from, you know, state and local, uh, you know, counties, road crossings. Uh, that need to be taken care of before we can, we can really do it.
Asking a question while you're, how much money do you think Summit has spent in, uh, South Dakota, North Dakota, Iowa? And Nebraska and Illinois, how, what is the number that's been spent that we haven't?
I think on easements alone, um, project wide. I think it's something like three hundred and fifty million. Uh, I know in Iowa, they spent a, a, a little north of a hundred and fifty-eight million on easements.
Just on easements.
Just on easements, um.
What is your total budget for all of this? When this whole project started, um, what, what is the budget?
Yeah, and that's way over my head.
Okay, all right, I didn't know that's something.
I remember one time seeing like forty-three billion.
Billion, okay.
Well, I think. Uh, four, I think it's four point four, four point five billion, um. And I think that was a rough estimate before, you know, there's delays, of course. Uh, in a perfect world, four point five billion is, is what we would need to get this project operational, of course. Um, circumstances do get more, it gets more expensive the further it gets down the road.
Kind of, I thought there, an update on, uh, expenses and budgets and, uh, is, is there ever a time where it gets too expensive? To make it happen? Uh, there's just gotta be an end to the money you guys have.
Yeah, I'm not sure when that would be, uh, I, I think that's kind of the crossroads maybe Navigator ran into a little bit, uh. Where the path obviously was a little bit more expensive than, than anticipated and.
And it's taken a long time.
And I think big projects generally do, um, you know, uh, for whatever reason, there's, there's a, there's a lot of reasons. I just. Heard of a project that had been sitting for seventeen years, uh, I think a, a wind project in New Mexico that.
Oh, boy.
Finally they got going. We don't anticipate that ever being the case, but, you know, I, I've heard of, uh. Transmission lines in Nebraska, you know, once they start construction, they hit a bearing beetle and they're sitting on their hands for six months, so there's. There's a lot of variables, uh, so you gotta kind of have contingency for those variables in place, um, in order to be successful in a big project. Um, but, uh, the main thing that's going on right now, and Greg's here as well, we've been kind of working together. I dropped the ball on a first meeting we had in place, but we're, our big push in Iowa right now, we're, while there's. Not a whole lot going on is to get dispersion model meetings set up with county officials. We're gonna work that through the EMA, uh. And so that could be fire chief, first response. Uh and so that could be fire chief, first responders, supervisors, of course, emergency management. Um I've sat through one of them. I know Kylie's been the main presenter for them. We have Brent available now, who's given a presentation uh here before for integrity management and he's great, but I will say it's about a two hour.
Sorry.
Go ahead, you can finish what you're saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead. It's, it's about a two hour meeting. There's a lot of lead up. Uh we uh i- it's very in depth. Um as far as like how we came up with this dispersion model, our inputs, variables, uh the models we used. Um and it's an open forum, so it, you know, it's kind of a tabletop discussion, kind of like we're having now. You can ask as many questions as you want. Stop us at any time, and then at the end, we'll go over the county specific maps. Uh and uh we think it's a good opportunity to roll out. It'll be a continued conversation beyond that before we go into, you know, operations. There, it'll be ran through again, but uh at least it gives a really good foundation on the dispersion modeling. Uh and I I found it very useful. It was a lot of good information. You know, we definitely give a lot of upfront before, you know, we just spoke some apps at you and say, this is here's our dispersion modeling. So it's, it it's a pretty, a a good course that I, that I enjoyed. Um being a little biased, but I did learn a lot, but.
Thank you. Cindy Kuro?
Yes, I was wondering, you're talking of all these people going to the meetings. Are the landowners gonna be invited to those as well?
Yeah, at this time, no. Uh not the dispersion model meetings, these initial ones. Uh to to us, it's still, uh the stance still stands on the security aspect of it. Uh but we definitely wanna get it into your county representative's hands. Um and maybe sometime down the road, we will be able to, but I, again, with all the information that leads up to how we got our dispersion modeling, I I think it would be a little bit irresponsible just to throw a bunch of maps out into the public without very extensive front end. This is how we got our information, so. Yeah, yeah. Uh but uh we're, we're willing to share it with your county officials, uh especially emergency management. And that'll be a continued conversation with them, if that answers it.
No, well, I was wondering, the emergency management, then are they all sworn to secrecy and sign N D As and all that kind of thing? Otherwise, why would they be less threatening than the landowners?
Uh no, they're not required to sign any N D As. They're, you're emergency management in the county, so I I think, uh you know, they can do with that information as they please, but uh we wanna make sure they're the most prepared in the county.
Well, I would just hope that our supervisors would see the unethical method that would be to not include the people who are most at risk, the landowners.
Yeah, and the supervisors are more than welcome to be a part of it as well, and that'll be information that, you know, at the end of the day, if the supervisors wanna discuss it at a meeting, that'll be, you know, the county's prerogative.
Okay. Cindy, give Ty a chance. He's gonna ask a little question here.
If she's finished.
Okay.
Yeah, I uh, I guess I'm kinda piggybacking on what she Greg, are you, do you have an idea how many techs we have, hazmat we have in our county now? I mean, we used to train a lot with farmland. But I mean, what are our numbers?
Five, six, then plus Shelby County has probably ten, and I think Monona County probably has eight or ten.
So our numbers are not as spread out as they were once upon a time.
Right. Well, we're part of, we're part of the tri-county.
And and that kind of would help to alleviate, alleviate some of our people's stress if we had more of our fire service guys that were at that level. And and that goes back to what I've asked you in the past about you guys sponsoring and working with the railroad and other people to use our county that do hazmat crossing. Cause I know the re- the railroad actually has a school, and I believe it's in New Mexico. That they, you can literally send guys to, and they will, you'd have to pay for them to get there, but their training, I mean, it's an elaborate training. Pretty much probably what we would get from that when we get it from DePaul. So I mean, them kind of things, if you would work in coordination, it would give us all of our departments a better opportunity to be trained. And so where we could actually alleviate some stress from what the landowners, I mean, the, they actually know they got a crew in town that can look after their well-being, so to speak.
There's gonna be some
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, and this doesn't necessarily have to be a one-time deal where, you know, here's your chance to make it to this. You know, we can work a lot of its availability of the, the people who can actually give the class. Uh but, you know, we're more than happy to, if we miss a couple of people, come back, do it again. You know, we'll, we'll work within each other's schedule, I think. And it's not a one-time deal where we're just gonna say, here's your chance, and and we're done with this. And then even, it'll, we'll basically do the entire thing over again once we have our, you know, route permitted, and we're gonna go into construction. It'll be, you know, we'll go through it again.
I think, uh Cindy, I think what, what your message is, is that you would like to be able to see what's being presented to the county as the hazards and you believe, I I think I'm reading you right. You'd like to be able to see what, what we're being told are the hazards, and you would like to be included in that? Is that, is that where you, what you wanted to ask?
Yes, I'd like to see the plume modelings and the dispersion and the risk analysis, cause at the hearing, it's already been disclosed, but Navigator has put out there for the danger zone, and I wanna see if Summit, Summit is close to that or not. Eighteen hundred and fifty-five feet is the danger zone. So I'm just wondering if Summit has that same analysis.
And I think that since you're so knowledgeable and all that, you would like to come and witness for yourself what they're telling our emergency management it actually is going to be?
Exactly.
Is that possible?
Maybe sometime in the future. Right now, it's not. Um and that's just the message. It, in, you know, there might be opportunities. I I think the lead up to how we got our dispersion modeling is very, very informative.
No offense to anybody that is watching, it's gonna turn into a political. I can see it coming. I want the fire departments and the, and the hospital, anybody to see what, what this is, so we can ask our questions that we need to as emergency response. And uh and and then, and then bring the landowners in at a, at a different meeting, and they can, they can go here the same exact thing. But at least we can, we can do our emergency stuff. He said, she said.
Could everybody hear what Greg had to say? I get it. I, and this is an open meeting, so that we can get it all out there. So did you hear what Greg said? Did you hear him? Cause he, I, he was a little ways away from our owl.
No, I didn't quite follow, other than I think he agrees with Summit, as he has all along.
I figured it was kind of hard for them to hear. Yep, thank you.
I'm Greg Miller. I'm the emergency management coordinator for the county. And the idea with what Riley's trying to get at with this dispersion thing is for, for the responders and the, and the supervisors, if they so choose to come, to get an idea of how our response is going to be, so that we can, we can understand, and there won't be anybody else that are asking questions. And I don't mean anything bad by that. I, I'm not trying to make anybody upset, but I just, I just don't want it to be the, I want it to be the emergency response people, the hospital, the fire departments, and anybody else that's gonna be, gonna be there. And then after we get done, cause we got, we're gonna ask questions that maybe we don't understand or they don't understand. And it's just gonna be a lot easier to, to do it that way. Then have, have the, have them do a, a landowner thing if, if and when it goes through. If it doesn't go through, that's the way it is, but, but at least we'll have an idea. And it, and it'll make it a lot, a lot more, a lot easier for us to understand what's going on.
I, I think that the point that Greg's trying to make is that it's not secretive. It's just that they're trying to untangle the weeds so that when they explain it, the weeds have been untangled, uh it'd just be easier to, is that kind of?
Yeah, I, I don't wanna get anybody upset, the public or anybody else. I just, I just want, think that it'd be easier for the response people to get the, get the stuff first as opposed to
So this is basically so that you guys can establish your new protocols
Exactly.
for training
Exactly.
for plan preparation
Exactly.
and response planning.
I just think it's easier to, for us to be there first and then, and then because it isn't gonna be any different. They'll, they'll, they'll get the same, they'll get the same class to, to the, to the public and to the, to the landowners, which is very important because it's gonna happen on, Cindy, it's gonna happen if it's gonna happen by your place first. And so you're gonna wanna know what to do too, so. So it'd be a good thing.
Meetings to be very close together.
Right.
But just kind of an information back gathering with just the responders and then bring landowners in.
Yeah, and no offense to anybody, that's just kind of how I feel, no.
Is that satisfactory, Cindy?
No, I'm not satisfied at all. I just think that's, it's closed meeting. That just means it's secretive. It's just like the county board of supervisors, why you don't, why you have to have a forum? There should be somebody there who represents the landowners. And we know from other county meetings that Summit has held, that they're telling them exactly opposite of what Navigator's response was. Their, their, Summit is telling them it's seventy-five feet is the danger zone, the end of the easement. And to shelter in place, and that the emergency people aren't to go more than two miles close to, I mean, roads are already blocked off two miles out. And people are to shelter in place inside that two miles. In other words, they die. So, and I wanna see if that's exactly what Summit is telling Dennison.
Would you have a problem with a representative from landowners?
If it's one.
If it's one? Cindy, would, would you agree to have one?
I just don't want this to turn into a political nightmare.
I'd have to, and I'd have to clear it through Summit. Uh yeah, the stance has been from the beginning, we wanna get it into the need-to-know basis first. Um that including any first responder, emergency management, and I, I still, in, in my mind, it's still kind of the, the responsibility aspect of, there's so much lead up. Uh I know Navigator may have released dispersion modeling. I don't know much about it. Um I definitely know that I wasn't informed in their dispersion modeling, specifically the models they used. Uh terrain, uh models they were able to use, uh parts per million that they use and the parameters. Uh I think that's very important. Um so in, in, instead of just, you know, blindly giving uh maps with some G I S uh layers on it and expecting people to be able to decipher that and what that means, uh there's a lot of lead up to that. And it's a, I think the, the first one I went to uh was about, there was four people. It was a two-hour discussion. Uh and uh these are people who will be responsible in the worst-case scenario to respond to a, a to a breach, and we definitely want them to be informed. We'd also encourage people to do their own research. Uh you know, at the end of the course, if, if there were questions answered that, you know, you feel like need answered, uh you know, we we would always suggest maybe cross-reference in it with navigators, if you're able to get some context out of that with the, the class we're able to give. But it's
Sounds like uh Cindy has done her research or cross-research, and I think her point is, is that she's done her research and would like to hear firsthand what is being told across the county citizens, having done her research.
Yeah, and I, I think that'll be good to maybe, you know, once, if we get some supervisors in there or, you know, Greg, or if somebody's okay with kind of sharing what, you know, that maybe their feelings with it. And in the meantime, I think that's perfectly fine. Uh to kind of maybe do a little, sit down at a board meeting and discuss, you know, kind of their, their takeaways from it. I, I think that's responsible. Um at this point, we just, we're, we can't share with the public.
I, I just have another question as I was listening to this. So using the proposed route, I mean, we know the terrain on the proposed, proposed route. So you'll actually have a dispersion model for basically everywhere along that route, due to the terrain and all that. I mean, so you'll get like more of an exact, it won't, like you just said, a G I S overlay. It'll be, all right, this is how we would perceive if the, if we had a break here. Uh this is where we'd have the, you know, this is where everything would flow to, the plume, and, and then the dispersion. So it would be pretty, pretty precise on the proposed.
Yeah, it's, it's very detailed. Um and I wish I could recite, um
I don't wanna get into that.
But we did have to use multiple tools uh or um programs to be able to account for terrain. Luckily in Iowa, the, the terrain's not as drastic as where you would uh find, you know, some lines where, you know, terrain is is a serious factor. Uh there are places in Iowa where, where terrain is, um and it can account for that, but uh it, there is a lot that goes into it, and they did have to use different modeling uh programs to be able to account for terrain in it. Uh but it's, it's very detailed. Uh I mean, it, I, I really enjoyed the discussion. I, I do hope sometime we can, I, I wish I could get a condensed version. Maybe that'll be my homework, is to get a condensed version of at least the lead up to the dispersion modeling and being able to bring it to the county and, you know, top parts per million and uh there's some, some good comparisons with like parts per million of C O two and hydrus, uh all sorts of different things you may find in Iowa. Um kind of get an idea. Uh I, I think there's, there's mention of, you know, kind of first responder plans. At the end of the day, the day, emergency management is, um I think that, you know, that they're gonna be in, I think the county's gonna be in very hands um as far as their plan, but we wanna give emergency management the tools uh in a worst-case scenario, so.
Wouldn't you think this is, I mean, do you have a date? Like, is it, you know, the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, yeah, whenever we can land on one. I know, I know Kylie, she's uh had to go back to South Dakota for a little bit. Uh but Brent, uh who came in here to give a presentation on lateral migration, talked about the warrior. No, that's a, that's Isaac. That's a construction manager, but Brent, he came in and talked about like the, the warrior and uh soldier and yeah, he, he's uh giving the presentations now, and he's very intelligent, very thorough, and um I, I think we can snag one of them and land on a date, and if the weather holds, um I bet we can land on a time, so.
Was there a question? Uh I saw somebody put a little question in the corner. Uh does that show up on your computer? A chat? Oh, was this a statement? You had a chance to read it?
Yeah, gee, I could ask a question.
Oh, hi, yeah.
Um I was curious, Riley, uh back in August, um I was informed that there was going to be a scheduled change on a valve station on our avenue. And um I think it's been at least five months now. I've not heard anything personally. Do you have any update on that valve station? And why I'm concerned is uh my neighbor Roger Dozart is six hundred and nineteen feet away from the valve station. And the plume modeling that I'm seeing that's being released, um does not look favorable should there be an issue with the valve station having a, a leak or something like that, especially with the terrain and the topography in that area. Any update for us?
Um I do not have an update specifically on the uh R A V valve. Um I've scratched it down. Um I, I know there for a little bit, uh valves were still kind of moving to an extent to where if we could find a, a landowner that we had got an easement with and they were willing to take a valve, um that's, we were gonna work with them and, and get a valve placed on their, on their property. Uh but and also stay within the confines that we had to, engineering-wise, make sure the valves are still in a safe area. Uh so I think that's where we kind of run into with the confines of, if somebody can take the valve, um and is willing to take the valve. And it, uh I know in Crawford County specifically, our valves are pretty close together, one on the south end of, of or southwest of Dennison and northwest of Dennison to really isolate, uh Dennison being a, you know, higher popu- population area. So we gotta kind of stick within those confines. If they are gonna move, I wouldn't expect them to move very far. Uh they're, they're definitely there as a safety feature for specifically uh the high-density population in, in Dennison. So I can check on that. I've written it down. Um and that's, I'm gonna write your name down just as well. Oh, Tim Val. And I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you.
Well, that's why we're having this, so that we can get the questions and he can get the answers for you. So that's why he's here with the update. So thank you for the question, Tim. And he will get back to you.
Because it's been a while since we've actually did much of this. PHMSA actually is our primary safety entity. Uh did they have, what, what is, like, when you're looking at the plume and you knew, and it, cause obviously that's gonna vary depending on the terrain, and obviously the wind and everything else. But uh, is there a setback that they have from a homestead then? I mean, you know, like you just brought up Mr. Dozart's property. Uh is there a setback that PHMSA has from that type of thing? I mean, obviously, you, you brought up large, can get, large population area, but I mean, e- every citizen, I would say matters.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Uh and PHMSA only regulates that we um do dispersion modeling for high consequence areas or what's considered a high consequence areas. There's certain parameters that will distinguish that. Uh in the, the entire summit route, there's only two miles combined that are considered high consequence areas in PHMSA's eyes. Um or at least in the regulations eyes. Now, that, that could change. So what we did, we did, we did dispersion modeling, worst-case scenario for the entirety of the route. Uh that's just to keep everything above board. Uh but and uh and then we can share that with a county that may not have something that's considered a high consequence area. Um you know, but out in um rural areas, um you know, they, they don't necessarily, I guess, have the, the same federal protections. But we want everybody to be, to be informed, and then from there, uh as we get further down the road, and I think there might be And I think there might be federal regulations to answer your question. I, there might be. It, I think it's, it's a little bit tricky because depth of cover can come into play a little bit, but, uh, I I think the general rule is fifty feet. Uh, for federal regulations and our, I, we started out, I think we tried everything to, you know, be five hundred feet, of course, we didn't. It, it doesn't work out, but you, you can't really follow that the entire time, but that's kind of how we initially engineered the route. How can we be as far away as possible, um, and make it work from there? And of course, there's going to be instances where. I don't know exactly the closest house in, um, in Crawford County, but I, I. I'd be surprised if it's less than two hundred and fifty feet, uh, uh, a- any given house, uh.
Well, I mean, well, I've obviously, I mean, you know, you always have concern about the incorporated pipeline, but it's the exposed stuff. I mean, that's got a better chance of being damaged by anything.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, somebody, a car fly off a road in an icy day and hit one of them exposed valves. I mean, them, them kind of things can, you know, obviously. You gotta hope for the best, but you plan for the worst. So that's why I'm asking, I'm more, not that I'm not concerned about the pipe under down, but I'm, I'm more concerned about that. Piece of pipe that's exposed.
Exposed, yeah.
And I mean, even if it's behind fence and stuff, I mean, you know. It, there, there, there's still the opportunity, um, the, a chain like things is not going to stop something large, you know, I mean, we're going to have. Automated tractors one of these days, and in fact, some people already got them, nobody in Crawford County that I'm aware of, but. You know, one of them could be recalculating its way across the field and right across the top of that exposed pipe.
Yeah.
See, you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
That's, that, you know, the windmills, when we were working with them guys over in southeast Iowa, or southeast Crawford. They actually worked with us, and I mean, they, they, they went out and they did the extra step to say, you know what, your life matters to me.
Yeah.
I mean, so we're going to do all we can above and beyond, and they did, they did a great job, I thought, for Crawford. So that's, I guess, what. I don't know, I, I, I'm sure that that would probably to help, start helping you reduce concern with some of these folks, because it would help with mine for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm still worried about the, the safety aspect, you know, and, and if our, uh, first responders don't have to. You know, they have time to, uh, evaluate and assess a scene on the, in route, but even once they get there, but if there's a life, I, I, I was a fireman. I know how they are. They're, 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 their head's down and they're charging to save a life, you know, that's just their mentality. I mean. Thankfully, it is, but I don't want anybody being risked unnecessarily. So I mean, if that's something that we can work on, I'd sure like to see that we're doing that.
Yeah, and I, I think a, a lot of that starts right here and, you know, I hate to bring up, uh, Sotarsa, Mississippi, but those guys didn't have any idea what they were responding to. They didn't even know the pipeline was there. The last thing we want i- in the world is for. You know, e- even when there's turnover within an apartment, we want to come back and be like, here's a map, you know, wh- what can we do to help you spin back up? You know, we're going to be around hopefully for a long period of time and we want to make sure that's not the case, that somebody's going in, charging into a. They don't know, you know, it could be, um, anhydrous or get natural gas or they're, they just know there's been a problem. We don't. Ever want that to be a case, and we want to take feedback from you as well. Uh, I know as far as the valves are concerned, we're. We're trying to stay as far off the road as possible and still being able to get access to it and not take up, uh, farmland. So there's a, there's a balance there, um. But, uh, there's definitely going to be some areas, like if we see a concern or, you know, say it's around a turn and we're like, if cars going eighty. It's hit, it's ramping the ditch and hitting that valve, uh, we might need to put, you know, maybe a little bit extra protection. So it's not going to be a one size fits all, uh, in, in any account, I'm sure. Um, but, uh, it's, it's definitely going to have fences and cameras, uh, but, you know, it's an asset to Summit as well as, as it is a, a safety. Um, feature for the, for the project, but, you know, we don't necessarily want people damaging it, damaging it either, um.
Let me try to make your life difficult. I just, I'm the hope for the best, plan for the worst guy.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, that's what we gotta look at. An airplane crashing, hitting your bell, I mean. A, a million, a trillion to one, but it's the one time, and I don't want it to be in Crawford. Actually, I want it to be in Iowa.
Yeah, that's.
Kylie, since this is an update, are we still having a pig launcher out on, uh, Bernabas Road or has that been reconvened to some place else or?
No, it looks like the plan is still there.
Still there.
Yeah, uh, where changes into a ten inch line, um, there will be, um, a launcher for smart tools, um, and, uh, you know. A, a little bit of that is engineering and some of it's predicated i- i- into, you know, we've got to find a place for it, some, uh, where we can. Buy, buy property for it, um.
Because it's been so long, I, I didn't know if that had changed or not, and so since we're doing an update, I just kind of want to make sure.
That has not changed, um, not at this, not at this moment, uh, now, I'd have to go back and look through our, our pivot service to see if.
Is there any questions from anybody else out in Zoom land?
Yeah, I was just, like, make a comment if I could.
That's why we're here.
Um, I think in light of the recent discussion about the concerns of the plume modeling and close to residences and this type of thing. I guess I'm just going to put an additional plug that, uh, other counties have. Become more aware, I think, of the safety concerns that this project poses for their citizenry. And they have taken the bold steps to go ahead and align themselves in getting an ordinance. So it allows the county supervisors to have a say in where this goes, instead of just saying. Oh, well, I guess we'll have to do this because that's what you're telling us we have to do. Um, I think it's, we're to that point where if we don't want this crammed down our throat, we've got to. Get in line, get an ordinance. If this project doesn't go through. Then you, you, I guess, as I understand the ordinance that has already been worked on. There is that option that as long as the landowner and the pipeline company or whoever is wanting to do this. You've made that exemption available for them. If they don't, then that's where there's going to be more of a, an opportunity for the landowners to have a say rather than. This just getting rammed down their throat. Um, we haven't gotten a decision yet from I U B. I'm positive. Or I, I want to stay positive in the fact that this isn't done yet until it's done. So, I, I feel your frustration of, well, this is. We just have to go along with this, we have to go along with this, and I'm saying, no, we don't. It's time to pull the stop on our reservation. And, uh, you know, they, um. They, they've used the bully tactics up to this point of saying, well, we're going to sue you if you put this in place. Well, you know what, if that comes to that, I guess you can always rescind your ordinance and at least we've. We've done the, the bookwork and the paperwork to get it on, on public policy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. Well noted. Any other questions?
I just have a comment, and I'm not trying to take sides or nothing like this. I just want to say thank you for at least offering these services to our first responders. Even, we've got natural gas pipelines and a railroad that knows what they're hauling.
That's what they tell us.
I mean, if, if there was an incident there, our first responders first have to try to figure out what it is. By at least having, well, know for the most part. What you're saying, what is coming through here, and if there's a rupture, they will know how to react. And by training them ahead of time, it'll save critical, critical minutes. You know, so I appreciate Summit stepping up to say, we are going to train and continue to train this, uh, now. You may go back on your word and it may only happen once, but, uh, be sitting here with pie on my face, but I take it at face value. Said you're going to continue to train, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, yeah, and, you know, we haven't. We've made some, some mistakes in the past and we hadn't always approached things that, you know, there's a lot of lessons learned in this, I think, um, but I, I think that. Our, our big push is to make sure, no matter what, we want to inform you, um, first and foremost. Uh, and then we can give you our, our side and you can. Do your own research and, and hear it from the public and, you know, at the end of the day, make an informed decision, um, but, you know, we're. We don't want to hold back any opportunities for the county to be prepared in a worst case scenario, and we understand that. Us coming in here has made a lot of work for a lot of people, um, who, you know, aren't getting paid anymore to be here and, and deal with us. Uh, so we appreciate it as well and, um, you know, we, we're always open for answering questions and hope we can at least. Be an open door, um, you know, if, if, if you feel like we're not doing as good of a job, uh, with certain aspects of, you know, special or informational outreach. Call us out on it, um, you know, uh, I'll be, I'll definitely be around, um, and, uh. Yeah, and I, and we're always available and I appreciate y'all letting me come in here and, um.
It was time for another update, and I just asked for our citizens to kind of give some input on their thoughts and.
Yeah.
Uh, keep the subject on the front burner, because if it's coming, we need to be prepared and, uh, we need to really. Be aware of what's going on in our county, and if we need to make an ordinance. We may need to revisit that and figure out what we can do to keep our citizens and our landowners safe as possible.
Yeah, uh, and, and as far as the ordinance aspect, I won't give you my whole spiel on it. I, I definitely think that, uh, maybe that. He may have updated you, but the county attorney getting eyes on Judge Rose's decision is, I think, is important and kind of being able to digest it from a county attorney's aspect. Um, I think we're, we're expecting some, we've had some procedural rulings in the Northern District, doesn't necessarily affect. Um, here, here in Crawford County, but there, we might have a ruling there, you know, shortly. I know there's been some procedural stuff. I think, you know, the county attorney might be able to digest that a little bit too and give you his take on it, uh, because I can, I can always give you Summit's take. May not always be.
We'll get his take.
Yeah, might not always be the county attorney's take, but I, I think, uh, yeah, I, the, there's always great information coming from within the county, I think, is, it's always a good. Always the best option, but anyways, do y'all have anything else up?
Well, I, I appreciate you coming and giving us updates and I, I, and I know that you're trying to correct early mistakes. And that's probably what's generated skepticism from the people that tend to watch this most closely. And, and I, and, and, and I don't blame them, and that's why I, I like to just keep stressing the good neighbor policy that you guys. Can create with them, with us, with, with everybody that affected, which basically the state of Iowa, western side of the state of Iowa. I, 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 I will never argue that there's probably some, there's, there's value in this, because, I mean, there's, you know. The clean environment, whatever, I mean, you can start throwing all those things out, but I'm, nothing will override the good neighbor aspect, you know, and. If you guys are working your heinies off to be good neighbors, it'll be, you know, it, it just benefits us all in the long run. You know, I mean, obviously it'll benefit you guys and then only, you know, for helping the environment or economically, but. You know, the goodwill will go along, and I mean, I hope you keep working to rectify. The lack of transparency, some of the bully tactics that they talked about, you know, I mean, I just. I'm going to just quote my favorite president, just give us a square deal. That mean, that means everything's equal on all foursides, you know, and just give us a square deal.
Yeah. Well, thank you all and, um.
We have your number.
Yeah, just holler if anything comes up and, uh, I'll, uh, hopefully be able to, we can get a meeting scheduled and go ahead and some more information out there and.
Sounds good.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg, for coming in and helping.
Thanks, guys.
All right, our new agenda is our, uh, CDC update with Paul and Stephanie, so come on up.
Good morning. Good to see you all.
Yeah, good to see you.
For those of you that haven't met me, I'm Paul Com, I'm the new, I can use that still, I think, the new chamber director here in town.
You are.
Um, been here about five months now, so I just kind of wanted to come in front of you and. Um, just get an updated list of, uh, what I sent you and then, um, also, uh. On there is shared, I'll share the time.
And shared?
Yeah. Isn't it all? No, they're, they're all different, sorry.
We're not used to being three pages, that's probably why, um, we all thought we needed to pass it on, so.
So, uh, I included our, uh, uh, list of dates that we have for the year, just to kind of give, I thought that. That's something we just put out here the last couple of weeks, and I thought that'd give you a good idea of what, what we have our fingers in at the, at the chamber. And, uh, kind of go from there. Um. I, I apologize for this being the first time in front of you and requesting money, so. I'd, I'd prefer, I guess we will probably need a little handholding in this, both Steph and I, first time kind of, uh, on the CDC side. I know you guys know, know Steph very well and, um, but, uh, as far as the process, we maybe need a little handholding with that of how we move forward. With what we're doing, um.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so I can add to this, you know, last time we were here was, we were looking for Paul, right? That's, that's the last time we were here to get him. I, I think together we put a, a great team, I think, between Paul, Mariah and Drew, joined us for tourism, if you didn't know that, Drew Perring. So we've got all three in play and I think we're set to move forward. What Paul has there for you is strategic plan. I think that's the most important thing of knowing what we're going to do. Um, clear expectations helps us, you know, give you what you're looking for too. I'll let Paul go through that, and I think our biggest thing is wanting to know what you guys are, are looking for too, so we're all on the same page.
So we went, went, as, uh, Steph said, we went through and did a strategic planning, uh, had already had one meeting before it even started, so. Um, Steph and Ty both were involved with that heavily and, and the whole board, uh, came up with, uh, three separate areas that we work in the chamber. Uh, tourism and economic development and kind of came up with some strategies and goals that we had for the, for the year, so. Uh, we want to increase chamber membership, obviously, that's one of the things that pays our attention. Uh, one twenty-ish. We have a few that we just sent out second half dues and, uh, have a couple that are, we need to reach out to and, and, uh, make sure that, uh. That, that one twenty-eight was a, a five percent increase. Uh, we want to attract more Latino businesses as members, uh, rebrand the CDC website, which has been our, our big project so far. Uh, that was kind of our first step. Uh, we are within days of that, actually, uh, it's propagating right now.
That internally or?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have a line item on the budget for that, so we just, I had a little, a re- uh. Experience and sort of drew and, but actually, Mariah kind of stepped in and did, uh, a lion's share of it. Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be nice. We're gonna, uh, soft launch it here, probably within ten days, I would think, depending on everything, and then, uh. Put it out to the public shortly after that, once we get some feedback from, from, uh, board members and, and some other people that will soft launch it too, so. Um, and then we just want to strengthen member engagement, uh, you know, you know, get, reaching out to them, uh. And, you know, getting face to face with them more than, than, uh, than we have in the past maybe, or, and, uh. You know, starting that this week, even as our, that our big push, it kind of waited for the website, and then we have some software that's, uh. Is going to, that we purchased, that is going to be part of that website. And that we can, we can do a lot of things with that and reach out to, we want those to be in place, kind of before reaching out to them and. And that way, a good touch point for them would be to show them that website and the software that we'll be using and the access that they have to that, as members.
So, like, on that, and I get asked this different times when I, I go into Asmole Co-op for a cup of coffee after chores, kind of a routine a little bit.
You need to be a senior farmer.
Yeah, right. You know, and I'm not sure if Asmole is a current member, I know they have been in the past, when dues come. And I've been asked while we're in there, well, what do I get? What do I gain from CDC? You know, we're co-op, we advertise ourselves. What is the change? Why am I paying these students? So what's your answer to that, or what's, what are you going to tell them in your member engagement?
I mean, right now, we're developing a list of that, actually, so, and we're looking at possibly a new, a new, uh. Uh, process, process for members that they can choose differently, different, and we'll just have a list of everything they get, whether it's. You know, the lowest one being a sticker on the door and access to our newsletter, you know, up to, you get this, this, this sponsorship of this, this, and this. And trying to, trying to clarify all that to put it on, on a page that not only for us internally, but the, the, uh. That the person knows that too, you know.
So you have different levels of membership.
Yeah, exactly, and, and we do that now a little bit, but it's right now, to be honest with you, it's fairly confusing as. Uh, as me, even five months in, I would have to go and figure out if somebody asks, so what, how much is my membership, you know? Well, look to ask, let me ask you a few questions and, you know, we kind of, uh, figured it out from there of the way it's set up. So we just like to kind of make that a little smoother.
And I think it's important to have a very, uh, definite, you know, feedback when people say, well, what do I get? Because that was always when we were pushing for memberships years ago, we as board members had a hard time even say, well. Not sure what you get for that, uh, other than being mentioned here and there, but I think that that's important, because. And I also think it's important to reach out again to some of these new businesses, you know, in Charter Oak. Ty has mentioned that, you know, people have never stopped by his door and said, hey, why aren't you a CDC member? And give them the sale, uh, hiding concrete is less weak, you know, I'm sure with the right, they would be more than glad. But I think people need to maybe reach out to some of these companies that care about it and are going to call you up and say, hey. Uh, why don't you come see me? So, you know, maybe think about that.
We, we feel like that's the, the second step. First step is, uh, getting to the current members, getting them. We, we feel like that's the, the second step. First step is uh, getting to the current members, getting them and get in front of them, showing them everything. And then using that new website as a tool to approach uh, non-members right now. You know, hoping, hoping to grab the low hanging fruit that was mentioned before and people that should be members, you know, that are.
Yes, I can answer that, Paul, to answer your question too, I think that's one of the pieces of, you know, people expect something directly from me. You know, and it's not always gonna be that way, and I think that's what we need to come back through. Strategic plan was the big piece of what can we do? How we, how we serve those members is different than before. You know, the, the uptown businesses don't need you to advertise for them, right? They've got social media, things like that, but what they need is the training or how can I grow or what's my resources? And that's something that, that piece of it will be focused on of, you know, who can we bring in that can help do grant writing? Who can we bring in that can help do the business plans for those people that want to be here? You know, how do we fill those pieces? But then back to the communities like that, if those businesses aren't coming here, they don't exist, you know? So how do we, what it will bring to them is how do we bring stuff to the area and how do we keep those people in the area and how do we grow in the area? So.
Do you, do you help with staff? I mean, I, I know in the past when we were, when we were on the CDC together, a lot of times on there. You go through and you ask the questions of how the businesses are doing and what's, there's some of their biggest challenges or hurdles. And you know, one thing we always hear is staffing, you know, can't hire anybody, do, don't get the applications. Are you guys kind of drilling down on some of those hurdles to help?
Before they kind of told you, these are the people you need to go to and you can go to everybody else, right? This is the best of Iowa. The state doesn't have that program anymore. But that's what we're looking at inside, like, how do we go out to those people and make sure that we find those things? But don't ask the questions if you're not gonna ask on it, that's number one, cause that's, I think, what we've done in the past, right? We've, we've asked, what do you need? But if we don't have a way to get them a resource, then that was a negative.
Right.
Negative ask, right?
Right.
So I think that's the big thing of making sure we've got a plan in play and then asking, what do you need and how can we match that up, resources and things like that? It might not be the individual things, one-on-one, but be the connection to where that, get them to the person they need. I think that's the big piece that we need to be on.
And it's what limited, that we've been out in the communities, um, you know, the, the number one, um, um, you know, the state does have ten questions to ask of the, of the bigger employers. Just to kind of, that they, that they want to hear back. Um, but when asking those, you know, the, the employees is number one every time, you know? And then followed up by, you know, and part of the reason of that is housing and there's just not affordable housing. And that's, and that's not, that's not Dennis and that's statewide, that's nationwide, you know, just because of the way things have all kind of melded together here over the last. Twelve years, basically, you know?
So we did a housing study, oh, five years ago.
Five years ago?
Yeah. We saw some out, I mean, there's some condos and things to build, but.
Yeah.
And it didn't go as far as I think we might have hoped.
And there was some holdups there, I, I, I joined, joined the housing commission here also and. Covid, covid and then turned around with the construction prices, you know, some of, some of the ones that were built didn't sell. And so that kind of put, you know, all of a sudden, you're on holes for the developer who's going to build twenty-five.
And if you follow the Economic Development Authority, you know, back when they started that, I think it was like forty-one thousand houses were needed. Go get anything you can, right? Apartments, condos, whatever, we need something.
Right.
Now I think we're, they said we're down to that twenty-five thousand range and now we need to get into individually, what do you specifically need here, you know? What do you want to attract? You know, what, the businesses you want to attract, what are they gonna need for housing? Businesses you want to grow, what are those people that are here want to move up to? Like, we've got to get more specific in that. We talk a lot about that, the CDC can't. Drive that train alone because that would take a full time. You know, we can be part of it, Paul can be part of the committee, but we can't be the only ones driving that, cause. You won't get anything else done.
It's a challenge. But, you know, like, we have seen some things come from that housing study and without that housing study, we may not have access to a prison home that. You know, it's housing of a, a working family and, you know, just things like that. That lot had been empty for how many years? And all of a sudden, we found that perfect fit, uh, and it worked out, uh, and that was many meetings and many uh, struggles, but we got it done, so.
And as far as the housing commission, I feel like they're, they're wanting to get back on. In a big way, so I think that.
Partnered with Regan Twelve on any housing initiatives?
We, we're, we're members there obviously and, and talk to them regularly. They do have a couple that are uh, that are pretty attractive for Dennison. If we could get to that step.
Yep, they're great partners, so.
Yeah. Uh, under tourism, uh, if you, uh, you know, create another signature event, uh, that attracts five hundred people. We do have an asterix on that, uh, we're working with the city on the Rag Bar event, we'll find out this Saturday if Rag Bar will be coming through Dennison. Uh, we don't know, that's totally up in the air, so once that's decided, we'll, we'll go, if, if it's Rag Bar will be our event, if, if they do choose Dennison. Um, so, uh, we're, we're hopeful for that, but otherwise, if they don't, we'll, we'll try to.
So you know Saturday?
Yeah.
By which, for which year, for this year or for next year?
For this summer. They have a party down in Des Moines that they announced the route and, yep.
So all hands on deck?
Basically, yeah. Uh, we want to establish a relationship with events and attractions outside of Dennison, uh, just from feedback from members of the county. Um, they don't feel like maybe we were involved enough with those and, and, and some of that might just be that we're promoting those events more, you know? So, and then we want to increase barbecue fest profits by ten percent. Um, just looking at the different ways to do that. We have a, a lot of ideas there of how, how we can do that. Um, barbecue fest has been profitable the last couple of years. Um, but that's only due to the, the money that we get from the community and, and the, you know, our sponsors, we're starting to increase sponsorships there. And have some ideas there, but uh, last year, or not, two years ago, we had a, a commitment from the state too, that was a grant for thirty thousand. That, that helped in a big way, so.
Starting to get noticed.
Yeah. Uh, economic development goals, uh, finish the Ignite co-working incubator space, uh, that's in, in the works now. Um, just have a, a handful of things to finish off there and start getting that rented out. Uh, one of them is a, uh. Uh, when you, we noticed this year, it, it had been mentioned before that we need a little heat down there, I think, before we can really.
Oh.
Uh, get it rented out to, and, and have that be a, a great space for.
Be able to wait in those to businesses that want to use that to start out?
Not so far, we, as far as, we've had, had some people interested and just basically just coming up in conversation, but we haven't really promoted it. Uh, just because of that item that I mentioned.
The big thing will be able to get people in there and let them grow out of that space so somebody else can come in.
Right.
So.
Uh, one thing we have added to that plan is a podcast area that we're gonna have, um, for people to be able to come in and, and start a podcast, so. Uh, we want to advocate for housing and work for us, obviously. Um, advantage potential, potential commercial properties, that's uh. Uh, something we kind of want to revisit, some of the properties that have been looked at in the past and, and maybe find out why, why that, those didn't go through and, and if there's. You know, reach out to those folks, if, if it is, if it's a dead, a dead deal, that's not gonna work at all, we'll, we'll move forward. But we want to revisit and kind of learn a little more about some of those things that are, that are out there. And then we want to research a Main Street community program. Um, what I heard so far is, you know, it'll take another person to do that and, and the money for that, but uh. Uh, we, we hear a lot of good things about it too, so maybe it is something that we need to look at. I haven't, I haven't researched it near enough at this point to, to say one or the other.
You're talking like about Main Street Iowa?
Yeah. Exactly.
That council boss must have did that on their Broadway street. Boy, that street looks.
Recipient of it. I mean, it'd be a lot of good work. Would this be for Dennison or would it be for?
That particular one would just be for Dennison.
It could help another community go after it too. Yep, yep.
I'm gonna say your calendar of events was pretty tail and pretty exciting and uh, pretty impressive. Um, lots of to be announced, which uh, I think that's the process and some new things that we're gonna do as women in business. I'm glad to see those out there, so. Something going about every month, it looks like. I think I have them nice, it's awesome, it's a great benefit to our town, so, yeah, thank you very much for an update. We are doing great.
Any questions or anything you guys are looking for that you felt hasn't been hit on in the past that needs to be on the focus?
I just, I'm looking at your events, starting to see some of these, uh, communities outside of Dennison. Being listed on here for events and I just continue to push on that, you know?
I think that's the biggest thing of knowing about them, they were always, you know, brought to the.
Biggest thing that probably going on this summer outside is Ricketts, Leslie, Karen and Booyah all have their hundred twenty-fifth anniversary. Birthday, so. Those would be, those would be a big draw. For the county.
An opportunity for the whole county to hammer into one of the little communities and show our support.
Yeah. I guess my little question I had, what, what has been the history of uh, the updates to you folks on, on money that you have given us in the past? Uh, is, is it a regular, I know, uh, the tourism person has come in basically quarterly. Uh, that's something you need me to do, do you have to do that in a kind of update or?
You're gonna hurt him.
I'd like to see, yes, so yeah.
Yeah, if we combine those, if I did both of those, would that be a problem?
That's good.
I aim for quarterly.
We'd like to poke fun at Drew though, so.
Maybe he'll show up once in a while, I was thinking. Alright, very nice update, thank you so much.
As far as the uh, request for, for money for the year, is that something that I did at this meeting or something?
We did get your letter.
Okay, and that, and that surprises?
Usually that happens like in December time, timeframe, November, December, but uh.
So this is for next fiscal year?
First July.
Right? So we have not paid you anything yet in the current fiscal year, we do need the request for that also. Why, unless you don't need it, I think we do.
We always add that.
So you know they're in the budget?
Right. Yeah, we need the, yeah.
Of course, to release the funds that uh.
Things are different than they used to be, I think that's the biggest thing, we have to be out there, you know what I mean? How we support the members is different, how we look for businesses to get here, we have to look different. No, they used to come knocking on the door wanting to come here, that doesn't happen anymore. That's a big piece of this, you know, um, Paul and I have talked a lot about. If you're not out there, you're not gonna be at the table when something comes through and that takes money to be out there and it's important, but that's a big piece of it. Right, doing the same thing isn't gonna give us anything different than we got before, right? So.
Good job.
I like your direction, it's.
And thank you for your.
I think you got a great staff over there.
I'm, I'm really happy with, uh, we, we work well together and stuff.
Drew, very motivated. I think he was a great add, addition in the tourism side, but Mariah, she's just been outstanding.
She really has.
In her capacity since she, since day one, actually.
A lot of big smiles when you go away tonight, I appreciate that. Alright, thank you. We will see you again.
See you guys, thanks. Paul, get up.
Alright. So we're moving right along on our agenda, uh, so the next season's discussion. There they are, that's their hands away. Alright.
Hi guys.
Hello.
Hey, thanks for, thanks for having us back, sorry for today. Um, I'm Joe Langle, I'm back. Next to me is Keith Duncan. Uh, he's also on our team, I think last week, when we were in person a week or so ago, it was Jeff Clayton and myself, but he's double booked today, so. We're dividing and conquering, so. Uh, we do, we do thank you for your time last, uh, last week and again this week. Um, Amy did send us over some information, so. Uh, we had responded back that the commission you guys are currently paying was, it's, it's close enough and if we can add value and go from there, maybe look at that down the line, but. We would love to work with Crawford County and just here again to answer another question you guys might have.
So after you've had a chance to look at our current uh. Plan and our numbers, do you feel more positive that uh, your uh, product is gonna be, benefit us?
Well, I think our service will, yeah, sorry, cut you off. Yeah, our service, I think will definitely benefit you, some of that transparency and uh, you know, the updates, we. Huge value to the county. Um, and then just looking at the full market check, you know, you guys renewal, up for renewal, uh, July first, so now is perfect timing to. Kind of to show you everything out there, so, and then also guide you through the renewal process.
Alright.
Do you uh, appreciate getting back with us, but doing a better look at it? Do you see us moving from a self-insurance type fund where we're at, or are we probably situated the best we can be currently or?
Or do you see us going to a fully, fully?
Fully self-funded.
Yeah, and I, I'll jump in here as well, and I think that's part of just the market check as a whole. Um, when we would go and review those numbers, there are certain. Cues and underwriting that, that get back to us and say, hey, this year doesn't make sense. Um, based on your size. Um, I think the fully self-funded conversation, um, would bring a little bit more risk and that's completely fine and part of what we would look at. Um, uh, just in hearing some of these conversations too, it sounds like stability, um, is a, is a big source of topic. Um, just in the conversation as well. Um, so just looking at the variety of opportunities, um, in the market, whether it's with Wellmark, UHC. Um, I think our job, just being carrier agnostic, is to come in with all these Wellmark and UHC opportunities. How to uh, fund your program differently and then ultimately uh, bring those options to you guys to make the decision. Um, with our recommendation as well, because yeah, our, our goal at the end of the day is yes, to save um, the county as much money as possible. Um, but we also want to provide the best value of your benefits plan to the employees too. Um, so there's one, there's one way of, you know, trying to allocate salaries and benefits package as a whole. Um, but from a recruitment and retention standpoint, uh, that's a big source of uh, topic for us as well.
And then I would, I would add, you know, there's a big piece of information that comes with the renewal. The prognosis and diagnosis stuff that'll come on your large claimants that we will not get until the renewal is generated, that'll really. That'll really kind of lead our dis, lead which path to go down.
Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, makes sense to me.
So what, what is our next step then? Uh, how do we transition forward?
Today, just a discussion, I don't.
Okay, yep, no, we don't have to take action, so, uh, what would be the next thing we need to be on our agenda?
Next step is if the board so chooses to enter into a contract with them, would be put on the agenda to take action in regards to. Move forward with Holmes Murphy Insurance. Being our.
So right now, like, finding big savings wouldn't necessarily be the thing on the horizon, it would be all the additional. Statistics and data that we can actually gain from these guys that may create savings. Correct. That's kind of what.
I guess what I was. We need an estimate, but don't, or is we just going forward? Well, I didn't know what our new costs are.
Paul stayed the same, I mean, isn't that the email that we got? That he sent to Amy, was the cost would be the same, right?
Yeah, 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 the cost to work with Holmes would be the exact same cost you're paying today, we just hope to provide you a different level of service and expertise.
So, okay, so the ten percent projected increase that we had received won't happen? Is that what you're saying or?
And, and so that, that's where we would, so how that process would work, if you guys were to move forward with Holmes Murphy. Um, we would send over what's called an agent of record letter. Um, once that's signed, we would then have access to all of your information. Like Joe mentioned, your claims data, your high claim information, um, where your deductibles and out-of-pocket maximum sit. Um, that we just don't have further insight to right now because we're not your agent, knowing that information would allow us to then target a certain solution. Um, again, we could come back and find you savings instantly, um, but then it's again, the second conversation of is this what's fair to the employees? Um, are we still providing them the same value? Um, so to, to answer your question very short, um, no, it couldn't remain at ten percent. Um, but if that's the best option that you guys want to have, it, it can, it's not gonna go up, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you, okay, I see what you mean.
You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah. Cause we budgeted for the increase.
And they told us that with their, their extra-large base, they could potentially lower that ten percent.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you do the same.
Go ahead, sorry.
If you do the same thing with.
Thanks, Amy.
Go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
I said, if you guys do, if you guys do the same thing with Wellmark you're doing today, the rates are gonna be the same with Holmes Murphy or anybody else. So if you stay fully insured with Wellmark, the increase is likely gonna be the same with us or with your current agency. We would obviously try to negotiate that down, but I think our expertise is, once we get the full renewal and the prognosis and diagnosis, then we can go out and do a market check. We can look at the IGHC people. We talked about as well, where you have the buying power with those other five thousand members, or ten thousand members, excuse me, like five thousand employees, so. Those are solutions we look at once we have the renewal information, but if you guys are happy doing what you're doing today, and if Walmart gave you, someone said ten percent increase. It's going to be ten percent whether it's with Holmes Murphy or your current agent.
Sure.
The question that I have is, when would we have the discussion, you know, to offer the HSAs and the different products, the different tiers? When would those conversations come for our employees to see what benefits they would reap from the other options that they would have?
Yep, so if the July first effective date, we would anticipate being named your agent, hopefully sooner than later. We'd get all those options, that those pricing structures and plan designs and present them to you guys probably in March, and then your employees would elect, have an open enrollment period in May.
And to further that as well, from Joe's point, we're very, very big on education, if employees don't understand their benefits package, they also don't see the value in it. Because at the end of the day, you guys pay a lot of money in benefits, so does everyone, right? So we want them to fully understand their benefit package, so we'll come on site and do in-person meetings, we'll allow them to log in to one-on-one consultations, to talk to our team. So we'll be there in full support for the education material for your employees as well.
And I think that that's the part of us going with your company that is most exciting for our employees to have other options that suit their families more than, you know, we talked about before. Two people are paying the same, that same premium as a family of six, and not getting really probably any benefit out of it because they maybe aren't even going to knock, you know what I'm saying, so those options. Are going to be great benefits.
Like Keith said, we really don't have much insight to your plan, but once we were named the agent, you know, that takes effect almost immediately in a group, in your market segment. So we can go to Walmart and, you know, request these alternate plan designs and alternate rate structures, things like that, and then bring them back to you and have a discussion.
And, and then I know bu- budgeting is important as well too, and again, we, I, I don't mean for this to come off pushy, pushy at all, but. Again, that, that decision sooner rather than later would allow us to do that market check to hopefully give you guys enough time to budget. And then help us create some communication material for both the county and their employees too.
I just don't. Seeing the value that they're bringing at.
That's the key.
The key, that, that's what really. Kind of knocked me over last week with the value that you guys are. Offering to bring to our employees and to us as. Caretakers of the purse trends, I guess, is like. I don't, I'm, I don't, I don't.
Give good benefits at a better price.
Not, not anymore.
No.
If that cost is the same, the benefit, what we're getting out of them is. Far more than.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're getting more benefits out of.
To me, it's an investment of what we could potentially save down the road by having more analytics and having these sales reps.
And then to me, we have a better partner to help us try to manage what we're doing, because none of us are experts in it, so we want to have a partnership with an expert. Or our healthcare guru, do you have any comments you'd like to?
Or questions?
Um, no, I, I spoke with Joe a little bit after, um, the only thing is, we also have that other company working and doing. Work as well, so I know. They both, you know, bring a lot to the table, so I know changing record of agent, you don't want to. Do that maybe too quickly, I don't know if you want to wait until you hear back from them, because they have been working on it for a few weeks now. So, I mean, just putting that out there, but I mean, a lot of everything that.
I'll, I'll throw a analogy towards that is. Uh, when I go to want to buy a new car or new tractor or whatever, and got two salesmen working on it. And they're, the ones that get back to you first and fastest are probably going to get the deal.
Well.
Just in retrospect, I mean.
The difference though is, one was looking at the ISAC stuff, and they have that other plan, so I don't know which one is a better fit for us. If we can get in there, so I think, I mean, everybody kind of offers the same kind of deal, but I just don't know the difference between ISAC. And the, um, the group that they were talking about, which one would be a better savings.
I, so, can I, can I maybe respond to that just quickly? So. Yeah, Home, Holmes Murphy is truly independent, so we work with ISAC, we work with IGHCP, we work with Walmart directly. You know, either on a fully insured or, or self-funded basis, Holmes Murphy can show you all four of those options. Now, I'm not going to say ISAC loves us as much as. You know, maybe Walmart directly, because ISAC does have their own consultants too, but Holmes Murphy has groups in ISAC.
And, and to further Joe's point, I, I think the, the other rep that you're maybe talking about, they don't have the option to look at IGHCP as well. And I think that's just the benefit of being independent, is we're able to look at all those various options and we're not handcuffed with anything as well.
Yes.
Thanks for your.
Very much.
We're trying to do better, go get in our local for our on-hand experts.
Right, yeah. So Amy, do you have any idea how long it may take for the other company to give their pitch?
I, I know they have been working on it, I literally just sent off an email to them before I went downstairs, so. I, I know they are working on stuff, but I don't know, I mean, obviously, no one's looking at our renewal, because Hoffman currently has that. So, um, it's, I guess it's all the other stuff, you know, so.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, one thing, you know, one thing, since the price is the price, one thing I always, I mean, I, I recommend is, pick your agent, pick who you want to take Crawford County to market and represent you guys. You know, we, we can all bring you back the same solution in theory, except I know Assured Partners cannot quote IGHCP. So really, if the numbers are the numbers, who do you guys want out there selling your company to the marketplace, and just one person can bring back all the solutions? Because right now, we, we want to represent you on your renewal and also show you those other options as well.
And I like the other options, and that's one of the things that really intrigues me, because I, I've had an HSA and I know what a benefit that is and how it. Really can help in a family situation, if you don't have a lot of expenses, that money's going in there, it just keeps growing. And as a retired person, mine's still there, so I like it.
But what's really nice is you can use those for our long-term care premiums.
I could. Hope pay. Trying to have a little push in there for me here. Anyway, any other questions, or do we want to put it on the agenda to discuss it next week, or do we want to give it some time, what's the wishes of the board?
Well. Okay, I think we can put it on agenda, take action next week, just naming our.
Let's see.
You think we'll have any?
You mean, you're asking back from the other?
Naming our agent.
Yeah, I'd like it, but I mean, I hate for them to keep working that you want to change, you know what I mean?
Well, just give them the first thing to say. I understand that a hundred percent, that's why I'm trying to keep them kicking the can down, the road doesn't help, so, see, they're up, so next week.
Today's just discussion, alright?
Today's just discussion.
Next week would be discuss, take action.
Yep, discuss, take some action next week, so, uh, is our wish to tell the other company to stop running numbers for us? Is that what, that you kind of want next?
That's how I'm kind of, Craig said, we've got a deal on healthcare. Insurance for that, and then. Many seem to like for, you got a partner to partner with. Their one-stop shop.
Yep.
Um. And just like your last week's presentation brought. Something, I mean, something more than anybody's ever presented to us.
I appreciated it, so to be courteous, you know, we need to give direction to our, the other company that's going through some numbers and some work to bring us some hesitation, so.
And Joe, this would be a one, one-year contract, is that what you do year to year?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you could fire us thirty days' notice, but honestly, I mean, we would hope that doesn't happen, but, yeah. Your, your renewals are every, every year or whatever, so. And we were probably thirty days out, so.
And really, all you would need is just the agent on record change form from Walmart.
Yeah.
Yeah, any, any lines of coverage, and, and to your point as well, we wouldn't just be looking at medical, so we would run you through our, our market segment with your ancillary products as well too. But yes, it would just be a signature on a piece of paper.
Yeah, and for VSB, for the vision and for task. And our long-term disability, we don't have an agent on record at all for those three, so.
Okay, so we, yeah, we would then just.
But I do, I, I know on our, uh, the life and long-term disability, we have a cut in rate because we don't have. An agent on record, so we, our rate is just a tad bit cheaper, so I don't know if you, if we added them, um. But our rates would just go up probably just a little bit.
We can, we can promise your rates won't change on your life disability by adding Holmes Murphy.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think it just. Yeah, if the, if the rates change, we're not going to add commission to increase your cost, we'll just simply take it over, I'm sure there's an internal rep taking a commission on it right now or something like that. That's peanuts compared to the medical, so it's not really our, I mean, it's our focus, but we're not going to get held up on that. I think it would be beneficial though, if you name Holmes Murphy agent on all your lines of coverage, so we're out there educating, we can represent you, and we, when we're out there educating your employees, we can talk about everything at once, so. Here's your life insurance, here's your employee, your long-term disability, those are important benefits that your employees should be educated on, so they know they have them. So we'll just, we'll handle that.
Alright.
You have a minute.
We got it on the agenda, we have our insurance.
Decide next week.
If we can, if we can make it work, would it be beneficial that we're there in person?
Okay.
We always like it.
Yeah.
I mean, weather permitting, don't need to risk your lives for it.
We'll send Jeff to see if he missed the day if it's really bad weather.
There you go. There we go.
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you so much for joining in and answering our questions, really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Pretty much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you, Amy. How was it, Joe?
Alright.
Yeah, I'm changing them now, bro, there's no big deal, I mean, that's, we literally just did one, because Craig left. And that Chris guy took over, so it's not that big of a deal.
Right.
We used to have the city.
And it'll be nice having them do everything, you know, because they're going out market, I don't think, I know Craig kind of has looked at Vision and Delta Dental, you know, Dental, but. You know, we haven't had anything really go to the market, so.
See, like, I was just kind of whispering today here.
Eight years.
Like on Delta Dental, I mean, like, I gotta get a tooth. But the. Insurance pays like.
Once you get in that first year, first year's probably the best.
Health savings account, when paper, things like that.
You don't have anything initially, until you start building up, building it up.
Was it six hundred dollars in plan, and that's how I'm.
And then you go to the doctor, and they say, oh, it's seventy-five, you got the bowl, this is.
So I mean, obviously. Because I mean, if it gets my attention, what about somebody that may have the lesser than, that works on their stuff, newer person on secondary.
Whatever, had finally started building up.
So that, that, that kind of sets home for me, is that.
You know, fifteen hundred dollars.
The different things that they can enjoy in every, for sale. Or they can present to us, I'm really kind of.
Yeah, that's just the planes of the counter, they will be less, because the employee's taking a bite of that sandwich.
They're not an expert in just health, so that's what I.
Gatoraxer.
Okay, what's next? Well.
Hey, we have to set a time and date, or we're not?
I don't, nope.
Alright.
But let's put it back on next week, just in case we.
Alright.
Get some out paperable stuff.
No action taken.
The Farm Service agent.
So we are at the citizens' input part of our agenda, what do we have out on the folks on Zoom who want to add to our meeting today?
What are we doing, right?
Raise your hand if you want to talk, any comments, any concerns?
You said we weren't doing something right.
One month? Dan's not here anymore, we have no public, everybody's good?
Got you, got you.
So waiting on that, alright, no citizens' input?
We're waiting.
Alright, any for the discussion?
Well, you got the new forms, have you looked at them, probably not, look at them. The new reports, compare them to what was in your book.
No, I have not.
Compare them, um, if something doesn't look right, then maybe next week, we can bring those department heads in. Um, you need to think about for the rest of the budget. Are there other cuts you're going to make?
We really need to go through that, do our homework, and then have maybe a.
Because I don't want to put all the numbers together if you're still going to cut.
I don't blame you.
Because frankly, it's a lot of work.
Don't blame you.
Um, so I would like.
You don't have that.
I guess I don't want to see, just see the departments get.
Right, but we're.
A cut.
I mean.
Like let everybody participate in the fund.
We really aren't in a bigger rush.
There is a timeline to do that mail-out, which is early March.
Early March.
So you do not have a huge amount of time.
What mail-out are you?
I'm a mail-out letting the citizens know what, um.
I just, I get so much.
I can't remember, it's levy rates, it's the House File seven eighteen.
That's the new thing.
Would it work? Uh, maybe next Tuesday after our meeting, to pick the afternoon or a couple hours at least. And after we each individually go through that collectively, we sit down and discuss what budget cuts we're looking at doing our department fund.
I can do that next Tuesday.
And all these other requirements.
Yeah, I'll do my best to try to, yeah.
So.
Like, some of the.
Next week.
Terry mentioned, you know, the, the elected officials rate for salary increases have changed, but. Key on some of the other ones, that's maybe still been changed.
Right. Because like, the attorney, I only adjusted his salary, nothing was done to his staff. Salary, now that you can specifically say this line, but, you need to look at the total dollars.
We've been talking about all along. Here's the total dollars we're going to allocate, do what you want with it, but when you run short. And you have to come back for amendment, we may or may not give you that amendment.
Alright, we're going to.
Depending on how you spend money.
Yeah.
Right.
Because the only way we ever get the monkey off our back is the Board of Supervisors. It's always, it's always in the paper that supervisors approve budget, and then it's just a run wild, you know, we've been having shoved down our throat how many times the last year, well, it's in our budget, so you can't do anything about it anyway.
Too many to count.
And I'm not saying that, I want to see any office not be able to operate and do what they do, right, we have fantastic staff that does a good job, but.
They have to put their big kid pants on, a manager.
But we're going to allocate a certain dollar amount based on the budget. And they have to agree with it.
And then pay raises and everything got to be in that.
Right, it's up to them, that's on their elected.
Exactly.
You do it, you do it how you see fit.
Seminate the funds, so you can function in your office.
Can you just say a percentage though, because different departments are.
Absolutely can.
You can, you can give each department a different dollar amount decrease, you can, whatever, whatever you want to do.
And no department has the exact same amount of dollar asking anyway, so.
That's my point.
Right.
So to say one percentage for, I mean, we could look at each one and say, alright, this, your department gets a three percent increase, you guys get a buck fifty, you know, you see what I'm saying?
To be fair, yeah, because. Most of these offices up here are pretty bare-boned, there's no, no fluff.
That's why I say that you cut them a lot, or. You know, it's hard to figure out the cost of living for what Paul's buying, and the medical people versus where somebody else is buying too, you know, God's operation.
Goes back to that year, Sam was going to give a loan to, who was it, you remember that?
Our probation for forty grand.
Oh, yeah, you have plenty of money left.
Why are you budgeting an extra forty thousand?
Well, those are the things too, do we want to look at pulling any of them pickups and stuff out and getting a. And getting a. A, a, a big order put together. Instead of Jim.
Well, they ain't going to do anything for us when they, when, when they actually do buy on the government contract stuff.
You don't really get it.
Well, the last company, Sheriff's Vehicle that I, we received, I had a couple of deputies calling me and saying, why do we buy them from here, we can go to Des Moines and get them X amount cheaper.
That's what I mean, is if we buy on the government contract down there in Des Moines, that's about as cheap as I think you can get it, isn't it? But why aren't?
You want to buy locals, much as you can, but.
The local, just like buying.
Local people, thousands of dollars, I mean, that's one thing. We just don't, I.
So you got to weigh up, weigh the difference of the governmental discount versus the economic impact of local.
Good point, good point.
Well, thank you. But if we was to bring, go down here to Team Ford Chrysler, they're not the only game player in town, and. Said, hey, what can you do for six vehicles versus one, or, we're here to negotiate six.
There.
That's got a Jim going on and negotiating his, and Paul going and negotiating theirs, and. What can you do for us as a county, we're going to buy six vehicles.
Now, you would hope that would have some power.
Do we know how many vehicles we're purchasing this? Well, the sheriff's department said two, right?
I think so.
Paul wants to get.
So Paul had one, now for sure.
One, his, right?
Yeah, that's three.
So who do you put the?
Sanitation.
What do you, you guys wanted something?
Or the landfill wanted one, so there's four.
Conservation now.
Conservation. Conservation.
They have lawn, they have a garden.
Okay, they're, they're all covered.
They have a thing, a skid loader, yeah. Who do you put in charge of that though? Do you have Jim and Paul go down together or?
Do they have to go down or can they just call?
I was thinking about sending Craig down there.
We'll call Team Ford to a meeting.
Yeah.
That sounds like good bargaining chip. You do that, he takes over I T.
Or you can do R F P.
Goes unpunished.
Right. Or you're just doing a R F P. Crawford County is looking to purchase.
That would be a great idea. Why don't we do that?
What can you do for us? Send it to us.
Let the departments know that.
Do it.
Think outside that box, Kyle.
Good idea, Kyle. I like that.
That was a great idea.
Because the department has got.
Then you give your locals an opportunity.
Exactly.
You got it right.
And and then the area local, because I don't, you know, maybe you'd get some from some in Des Moines, but I'm just saying, you know, you you know, we don't have a GM anymore. So that's kind of but it might reach out to Odeboater down to Harlan, like, you know, but you know, it's, it's hard to, you know, say you will reach out a little bit when we're, you know, going to look at going away from Hoffman, who is local and using their insurance too. Because it's still about our spending wisely here and getting the best value for the county. So I mean, I, but the R F P gives everybody that opportunity. I like that.
Each department head will say, here's exactly what I need, put it in the R F P. Right?
I like that.
Okay, there we go.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
You're awesome.
My brain does suck. I just, I want the decaf coffee.
Decaf coffee's helping you?
By accident. I did, perhaps like last Tuesday, I got home like, what the hell?
Buzzed up.
That's actually good, yeah.
Well, good. All right. What else do we need to discuss before we have an?
Well, I think, yeah, next Tuesday, let's just plan on.
A 1:00 P M. Budget work session.
Yeah. Next Tuesday. All right.
I'm working into my business.
Well, nice.
That way I could reach.
We already have a motion and a second on the board.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
All right, we are now adjourned. Thanks for coming, guys.
Harry, are you reaching out to Beth Manley?